We are calling the meeting to order of the Oxford City Council for December 17. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call please and posting of the agenda?
Councilwoman Basua.
Here.
Mayor MacArthur.
Here.
Councilwoman Perez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilman Starr.
Here.
Mayor Protem Teran.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall and the city administrative offices as well as the city's website on Thursday, December 5, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Attorney, will you please read the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. So prior to convening in the closed session, after which the regular meeting will commence with opening ceremonies around six o'clock, for now the council will go into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6 to review the status of labor negotiations and to review its available funds and funding priorities for the purpose of providing instructions to the city's negotiators regarding the organization specified in Item C1 of the meeting agenda.
Thank you, City Attorney. We are now adjourned for closed session. We'll be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
And Mayor, just there are no speakers for closed session.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to call the meeting to order for the Oxnard City Council and Oxnard Housing Authority for Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and posting of the agenda?
Councilwoman Commissioner Basua?
Here.
Mayor Chair MacArthur?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Peralo?
Here.
Councilwoman Commissioner Perez?
Here.
Councilwoman Commissioner Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilwoman Commissioner Starr?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair Duran?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, City Administrative Office, and on the city's website on Thursday, December fifth. And then I do have an announcement pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five two point three. Each member of the Housing Board of Commissioners present will receive fifty dollars for convening this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Fisher, was there any reports from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council convened in closed session to have a conference with its labor negotiations regarding item C one, and there are no actions to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comments for items not on the agenda.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, we're going to move to public comments for items not on the agenda. During this time, a person may address the legislative body, only on matters not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Speakers' requests shall be submitted as set forth on the first page of this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. After thirty minutes, if all speakers have not had the opportunity to speak, the remaining speakers will be given an opportunity to speak prior to adjournment of the meeting. The legislative body cannot enter into a detailed discussion or take action on any items presented during public comments at this time. Such items may only be referred to the city manager, executive director, secretary for administrative action, or scheduled on a subsequent agenda for discussion. Persons wishing to speak on public hearing items should do so at the time of the hearing. Looks like we have some public speakers. I'm going to call upon Lang Martinez, followed by Mr. Gutierrez.
Mayor Councilmembers, my name is Lang Martinez. I'm a known advocate out here in Ventura County, in Los Angeles, actually, all across California. I'm actually the first individual known coming out of homelessness in Ventura County as a known advocate. I have more articles accumulated for the work that I've done than anybody in the United States for the kind of advocate that I am. I've been featured in the Washington Examiner, Keystone Recovery, VC Starb, VC Reporter, Montecito, LA Times, you name it, I've been in those magazines. I'm also the first homeless advocate to be actually given the respect and brought in by LAPD at what the retirement of the chief that just recently retired in regards to doing the first video for Epic Times, California Insider, telling the truth about homelessness and protecting our officers in law enforcement. I was also considered what they call a CMS, what they consider a subject matter expert in regards to homelessness. I also wrote the article that was at Montecito Journal that was called "Vagrancy versus Homelessness and the Millions of Dollars Being Spent," and the one here in the VC Reporter, "Vagrancy and the Funds Allocated." I usually don't come here, but I've been very blessed, and congratulations, Mayor, congratulations to the new people. Aaron Starr, I hope to make a change. I was asked to come here by the community, my social media. I've been very blessed to have a movie deal with Market Street Productions. I have a book dropping in July. I'm engaged, and all this came from being homeless in your streets of Oxnard. I was that person in your park. I came here, Mr. Mayor, to offer my services. I'm a known advocate, and I've been considered a subject matter expert in regards when it comes to homelessness. Right? It's been broken down that there was vagrancy, homeless, and homelessnessness. My situation and my articles go all the way back to a timeline from the very beginning of removing the encampments at Ormond Beach. I was part of that, and I was with Chief Salinas, and I was advising law enforcement when they were actually doing the removal. And when it came to Halico, the article in Halico with the VC Star, I made a comment in that newspaper back in December fifth, a few years ago, saying that these efforts are redundant, they will come back. I implore you, Mayor, if you were to go down with me on Aramis and down on that area, I've counted seventy-five, seventy-five motorhomes and the situation with women and children. Oxnard and the people that have been involved in it have not made a dent in this. The situation, when my comment came from Halico, Halico is worse. There's people down there dying in their addiction. The situation here with Mercy House, I was the first person to bring it up, when they were dying in the hotel. That made the front page of the VC Star. When they were putting, when room key came onboard, they were dying in the hotels of overdoses. It was actually Oxnard Police Department that contacted me and told me about the situation, knowing that I would advocate for that. That actually came out in the article. It was in the VC Star, and then it was in the other article.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for your time. Mr. Gutierrez, if you can come up, followed by Mr. Goodman.
Good evening, and welcome again to the new and the old. Congratulations one more time.
Thank you.
I was walking with Mr. Starr before these elections, and then he would ask people about the important things, so the important things that they care for the most. For me, here's my two points, and here they are for you.
Okay.
For me, number one right now is crime. Police is not patrolling like they used to. We need to get the police back on the streets so they can start stopping these people from driving crazy. It's getting out of hand. They're driving now, some people like in Mexico, so running through red lights, not putting turn signals, blocking the streets, roads. Homeless people are doing the same thing by walking through red lights and not caring about the traffic and so forth. Same thing with some teenagers with bicycles and like a gang, four or five, on sidewalk and wrong side of the street, et cetera. The next thing I want to address is economy.
Okay.
As we all know, the economy, inflation. Well, my point is, you want to help with inflation, how about reducing the taxes, the city taxes? I believe it's nine point five, if not somewhere around that. If we can lower that to nine, that would help for inflation a little bit, you know, help a little bit on the pockets of the people. The other thing I have is I would like to see the city in a, I believe it was mentioned last time, that the city is now in the black and not in the red, so that's a good thing. I would highly suggest that future, don't put any bonds, and we don't need to, because I was reading on some of these bonds, state and local. For example, the state had one bond, I think all of them, they had a thirty-year, I mean forty-year versus thirty-year, like they used to. And at the end, they're paying like, is it a hundred and fifty percent or so from the original loan? You can look it up. But the point is this, we should stay in the black. I'm fiscal responsible. I would like my city to be responsible, not to take on any debt unnecessary. I know sometimes there are emergencies and so forth, so we should also have a reserve fund for such emergencies, correct? The last thing I'd like to do, actually, those are the two main points.
Okay.
I know it's a difficult task you have on hand, but, you know, we're here to support you. Hopefully, you can make the best decisions for all of us.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Gutierrez. Thank you. Mr. Goodman, followed by Alex Ruiz. Hi, Mr. Goodman.
March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Take note of that date. My name is David Goodman. I'm a business owner here in Oxnard, lifelong resident. I'm a retired peace officer. I attended last week's meeting to support and honor each of you and the new council members and mayor. I left the meeting after the swearing-in, but fortunately Manuel Herrera posted some video clips online, and I saw some of it there. My disappointment in what I saw take place has turned to anger. I am furious with some of you. You were elected to represent all of the people, not just one gender, not just one national heritage, and in case you didn't get the memo, the days of identity politics are over. I am mystified by the level of disrespect that was shown to our new mayor. I've never met or spoken with him, but he has certainly earned my respect if, for no other reason, he spent the last thirty years running towards danger to protect you from that danger while you were running away from it. For no other reason, he earns our respect. Thank you, sir, for your service to this community.
Thank you.
To bellyache and complain, for example, about where you were asked to sit on the dais is nothing less than immature. To suggest this was some sort of gender bias is simply ridiculous, and to state that you would not accept a different seating assignment solely so you could remember the next four years that you were offended is nothing less than childish. Grow up. The voters of Oxnard spoke loudly that they are tired of status quo bickering and infighting. Some of your actions have spoken that you intend to be divisive and disruptive to this forward momentum of the city. As a business owner, I'm putting you on notice. This is unacceptable and will not go unchecked. To that end, I want to announce that I have pulled papers with the FPPC for Purpose of Organization of a General Expenditure Committee, also known as a Political Action Committee. This committee, which will be named Your Fired Political Action Committee, will be for the funding of recall movements. I've spoken with some other business owners and shown them the video provided by Mr. Herrera. Based on those clips, I've received funding commitments in excess of twenty thousand dollars just in the last few days for this PAC. That number is going to grow exponentially. Take notice that your comments and actions are being watched very carefully. Continued inappropriate conduct will not be tolerated. No one wants to do this, however, if you don't rethink your positions and follow up with appropriate action, you will soon find yourself defending a well-funded recall effort. March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five is the day that your new council members are eligible for recall. Mark your calendars, because I've marked mine.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Alex Ruiz, followed by Lindy Levine.
Hi. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time, and I'm also here to comment on the events that happened at the last city council meeting. I also want to say that I'm a bit disappointed. I'm really excited, and I still am definitely, about the new city council and its members. I feel like, you know, we have here a good representation of Oxnard, and I hope that we can work together, I hope that you guys can work together to best represent us. And then to see the conduct at the last city council meeting was really disheartening, especially when that was the main takeaway from this council's first gathering in the media. Councilwoman Basua, I grew up in your district, and while I really appreciate passion and advocacy, the conduct that I saw from you regarding the events, I believe, was ultimately divisive and uncalled for. I value professionalism and teamwork above all else in my city leaders. I think the reason I came up here is I feel especially that it's frustrating for my generation to grow up with politicians that, you know, instead of working together or know how to professionally disagree or professionally speak to each other, kind of to end up assuming the worst in each other and taking jabs and, you know, just not work together for the best of their constituents. You're all one team regardless of issues. Everyone needs to act in a way a professional adult elected officials, working in the best entrance for their community, should act. The last thing I wanted to say is that no one owns a seat on any committee. You don't own a position. I'll go as far as to assume that many of you don't even own the pens that you're holding. It was all given to you by the votes and the taxpayer dollars of the people of Oxnard. We've spoken. We've elected Luis MacArthur as mayor. We need positive change, and we elected all of you to work as a team to push Oxnard forward, not to be disrespectful to each other, to make us look divided and unprofessional to the rest of Intera County. I really hope that going forward, the council can learn how to conduct themselves in a more professional, respectful manner, and in a way that positively reflects the city of Oxnard and who we really are.
Thank you. Lindy Levine, followed by Jim Carr.
Hi, there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And to council, to the mayor, and to Luli Lopez. All right, I come to you today, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the microphone there, yeah.
Over Ventura Road by the Wash, that's across from the riverbed, and I know that's another issue that's coming up tonight, but this is different. I tried everything I could today to get the participants of Kelly Long's office to come out here today. I met with them on August the sixth, Brian Smith and Ariana, can't pronounce her last name. They vowed to do something about the area, and now it's just wind-blown nightmare. There's tumbleweeds out there that are taller than you and me, there's trees that have fallen over near the train tracks. So Public Works for Ventura County says, oh, it's Union Pacific that needs to take the ball. So this last week, Oxnard PD and Union Pacific were supposed to get involved, but it didn't happen, I guess because of the winds or whatever. But Kelly Long's office will not play ball. They just kicked the can down the road. Matt LeVere's office is awesome. I don't know if it's going to take going to their meetings, the Ventura County Supervisors, or something. Otherwise, I need help from you guys, because I know Gabe Trim and Burt has been involved, but so far, no happenings have taken place, and it's a dangerous area because of the warming cooking and drug fires. So there you go, there have already been fires, so we just want to stop it from going to the homes, and that's why I'm here tonight. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Lindy, for coming in. Thank you. Mr. Jim Carr, and he's followed by Kyle Emanuel de la Torre.
According to Ray and Jan, the storm drain pipe from the Colony to the street is the Colony's responsibility, and from the street to the end of the pipe is the city's responsibility, since the pipe does not drain properly and leaves sludge and debris in the pipe, which causes the foul odor to come into the area of the Colony around the, around the condos. I would hope somebody from the city council would come out to see this very dangerous situation. On a different note, the Storm Drain Division parked a tractor on the south side of the hotel, at the, by Hollywood Beach, a parking lot, like they did last year, and it stayed there for approximately four months and never moved. Uh, the, the tractor blocks the view of the ocean and dunes and it, uh, for the Colony residents and should be removed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Kyle, followed by Ms. Morales.
Hi. Hello, my name is Kyle.
Hi, Kyle.
I'm a resident here, hey, I'm a resident here in Oxnard, I was raised here. Um, so I have a safety concern that I need, I think, I know needs to be immediately addressed. So this Saturday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, around four forty-five, I was on, I was in traffic on Channel Islands and J Street waiting for the light to turn green. It was red for a while, it was a solid red light, and I began to see cars run the red light. Um, I, um, at least five cars, five rows of cars were ahead of me, after all these people unlawfully passed the solid red light. I was at the front of the line, waiting for the light to turn green. I refused to pass, cross the red lights, red, red solid light. I'm a great driver, I know you're not supposed to cross that, so I didn't. There were, um, I felt very fearful for the safety of others there, and I saw one car that was uh, crossing before I, I reached the line. They almost got in a car accident because they unlawfully crossed. I saw pedestrians waiting to cross, and they could not cross because of the drivers' unlawful actions. The pedestrian had the complete right of way, had the, had the drivers not illegally crossed the red light, um, they, the pedestrian would have been able to cross. Um, I called the police to report it after, but there needs to be a camera immediately installed on Channel Islands and J Street to prevent this unlawful behavior. Um, that's uh, District Four and District Six, so right at the cusp of Gabriela and, and, um, Michaela's district, so uh, please help me make Oxnard safer. I know you guys are awesome, I know the police are awesome, just uh, if we can get that immediately installed, that'd be cool. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Morales, followed by Alexis Schmidt.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, congratulations to every single one of you. Uh, I stand before you today to speak on the behalf of the president, or the residents of the great city of Oxnard, arguing, um, urging all of us to work together for a greater good of our community. As representatives of our citizens, you have a shared responsibility to create a city that thrives not just through individual efforts, but by collecting and uniting as one effective and efficient team. An effective organization, whether it's in government, business, or any other sector, it thrives with clear communication. We must ensure that all departments, offices, and leaders are united, sharing vital information, aligning with each other's and everyone else's goals, and avoiding strife, dup, and/or duplication of efforts. Equally important, it is the ability to co, collaborate with respect. Each of you brings unique skills, perspectives, and resources, and we must respect each other's experiences and work towards a shared vision, um, so you could harness a potential and collaborative, um, oh, sorry, so you could harness the full potential of your col, um, collective knowledge. Together, you could address challenges more swiftly and efficiently. Efficiency is also paramount. You're entrusted with the responsibility to manage taxpayers' resources wisely, and that means finding initiative or innovative solutions to provide our city services while reducing waste. You must streamline processes and eliminate unnecessary bureaucracy, focusing your time and resources on initiatives that can have a greater impact on our community. Lastly, accountability and adaptability is essential. As you navigate changes and face new challenges, it is important to be flexible and empathetic to new ideas and solutions. Only by adapting to the needs of our city and our residents, we'll be able to continue to grow and improve. Together, we could build a future where our city is stronger, our community is more connected, and our government is more capable. I ask each and one of you to lead by example and work in unity, for the benefit of the people that we use there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Schmidt, followed by Dan Pinedo.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I'm Alexis. Um, I live in East Village, and so I have a few things I'd like to share in light of last week's meeting. And the first thing is that I want to share why I voted for Mayor MacArthur. And so my mom ran for the Water District at the same time, and so I think I had more exposure to him and his campaign than the average person probably did, and I was impressed by everyone's professionalism. And one night, I was fixing a campaign sign, uh, that would not go in the ground, and one of Luis's campaign workers pulled over to help me put the sign in the ground, and that's what convinced me to vote for him because, um, because the fact that he surrounds himself with kind people who value community is something that I find trustworthy, and I respect that. And so the second thing that I wanted to say is that there has been a lot of support for some people from outside of Oxnard, and I'm concerned about how these outside people have been able to influence our election, and I don't think they could really know what people in Oxnard actually need, since they don't live here. And so I would hope that these external supports don't become too influential on the decision-making process of the council. The last thing I wanted to comment on was the suggestion that the committees be eliminated. Uh, I can see how the committee situation seems bureaucratic. However, in a city with over two hundred thousand people with so many different needs, the council committees help to streamline the process of representation, since they provide another space for public conversation and participation, which, um, I have seen and learned that, uh, it increases trust in our local government. Uh, so that's all. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexis Schmidt. Mr. Dan Pinedo, followed by Doug Portello, please.
Mayor, council members, residents of Oxnard, my name is Dan Pinedo. Council members, when passionate commentary is delivered at the podium, it may appear to you that we don't support you. That may not be the case. I, for one, hope for the best for you and from you, for the benefit of the people that you represent and serve. Mayor, council members, stay true to the oath that you took. I take, take, I take this obligation freely, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Mayor, council members, consult with Mr. Fisher for legal and decorum advice. He is your city attorney. Remember, as you serve our city, integrity, honor, and most of all, your legacy as Oxnard City Council members matter. On a side note, happy birthday, Michaela Perez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Pinedo. Uh, Doug Portello. And he's our last speaker, unless there's somebody else that, um, is taking their time coming up here, um, but go, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council staff, and the public. Uh, I think probably enough has been said about that last meeting, I don't need to add anything more to that. But uh, I think over the last four and a half years, I've been kind of identified as probably one of the harshest critics of City Hall. It's because I care about Oxnard, I love Oxnard, I've lived here thirty-eight years, and honestly, I just didn't have enough time or interest, shame on me for getting more involved previously. Uh, but when I retired, I noticed in my neighborhood, and I live in North Oxnard, and a lovely neighborhood, I live in the Carrillo neighborhood, and one of the reasons I moved there was so lovely, it was so nice, and we saved, and we didn't have anything but a, you know, crate, and the first thing we bought was a washer and dryer, then we had to have that. But uh, you know, the reason we're all here is because we love Oxnard. And I know it's difficult, and I've worked in a hospital, a large institution, and change is difficult for people. And I think right now in Oxnard, we're evolving and we're having change, and we get a lot of excitement, but we also get a lot of friction. And, you know, I'm very vocal, I don't pull any punches, you know, I say what I mean, and I mean what I say. But there have been opportunities, even with people that wouldn't be my first or second choice, even my third choice, and I haven't always been satisfied with the level of service that I've seen from my elected officials and city staff, but there have been opportunities where I've been able to work with those people. And I'll give you a few examples. Uh, one of them was when I started doing the landscape restoration project, I worked with Marvin Boos, he was actually part of my project. And uh, Marvin had a birthday, and he'd go all around Oxnard, and one day, it was his birthday, and I thought, I'm going to go out and work with Marvin there, and there was Gabe Turan. So Gabe Turan and I, we worked together that day, at least for a couple hours, and it was great. Another time with that same project, uh, the director of, um, Parks, who was picking up my green waste, their, Parks Department was picking up the green waste, our volunteer effort was creating, and they said, we don't have the resources any longer to pick up your green waste. So I wasn't going to stop my project, I wanted to see it through. So I contacted the mayor, and Mayor Zeragosa put me in contact with Environmental Services. And for a couple times, they came on their route, and they picked up the green waste, and that worked lovely. Actually, he got out of his car one day, I was on Ventura Road, across in the Fremont Shopping Center, and he stopped, and he got out of his car, and he came over, and he thanked me for the volunteer effort that I was doing, because, you know, I didn't have a landscape maintenance technician on my bucket list, but I could probably do a pretty good job with Mayor Posas, so there are opportunities that we can work together. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Portello, for your time. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers on?
Mayor, that concludes our speakers on items not on the agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item F. This is the report of the city manager.
Uh, nothing except happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, that was a short report, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item G. This is where city council, the housing authority, successor agency, financing authority, Business Committee reports. At this time, a member of the legislative body may make a brief announcement or make a brief report on his or her activities. Further, members of the legislative body may request a scheduled consideration of whether to place an item on a future agenda. The legislative body cannot enter into detailed discussion or take action on any item presented during this report. The member's report shall not exceed three minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. Do any council members have any announcements or anything, uh, they'd like to report? Yeah, well, um, how about we start to the right and move this way, if that's okay?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Starr.
Thank you. So I attended the annual corporate meeting of the Association of Water Agencies of Ventura County, uh, where I had an extended conversation with Lynn Mulholland, who serves as an elected board member on the United Water Conservation District, and I'll tell you, he's a very bright man, uh, cares deeply about the aquifer, which is something, uh, many of us don't take, take for granted, or I don't take for granted, anyway, or I do take for granted, many of us do. I, I believe it might be worthwhile at some point for Mr. Mulholland or the agency's general manager to address this council about increasing the availability of, of water, because I think that's a long-term concern here. Secondly, uh, I visited the intersection of Roosevelt and First Streets, where there was a traffic collision this past Friday between a vehicle and a bicyclist who was seriously injured and transported, uh, to the hospital. Um, I, I don't know whether, uh, he made it or not, uh, but he had critical injuries. One of the many, thing, one of the things I previously noticed in La Colonia is that there are many blind intersections where it's difficult to see oncoming traffic as you creep into an intersection, and that particular intersection has stop signs on First Street, but does not have stop signs on Roosevelt. So people in the neighborhood have mentioned that there have been quite a few accidents at that intersection over the years. I was wondering if we maintain any sort of log of such collisions over the years, and if so, can that be shared with the council? And I would also request that staff, uh, investigate whether converting that intersection into a four-way stop might reduce the number of injuries and possibly save lives. Uh, lastly, uh, I would like to recognize the Pacific Heights Football Team, the Tritons, for making it to the CIF State Division Two double A State Championship Bowl. Uh, they had an amazing game this past Friday, recovering from a twenty-eight to seven deficit at the end of the first half, and they valiantly brought the team to a tie score of twenty-eight to twenty-eight with four minutes left to play in the game, only to lose thirty-five to twenty-eight against Grant Sacramento. I, I think they did, they did us proud. I, I really hope that we can bring the team to a, a future council meeting and recognize their accomplishments, and just let them know how proud we are, and that's, that's all I have to report today.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Starr. Councilwoman Masua.
Thank you. Um, I just first want to take a moment to wish everybody happy holidays. Um, this is our last council meeting of the year, so I want to make sure that, um, at least I get my well wishes out there. Um, I do have one request, and it doesn't have to come back, um, early next year, but I, I would like to, um, see where we're at with the Saviors property that we purchased in the corner of Channel Islands and Saviors. Just, I just want to get us a report on, you know, future planning, I understand, um, the council, we authorized the purchase of the building, just, just want to bring it back and see, you know, what the future plans are for that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Masua. We'll move to, uh, Council, uh, let me ask you, I know we didn't talk about it last meeting, would you prefer a council member, councilwoman?
Councilwoman is perfect.
Councilwoman is perfect, okay. Councilwoman, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, Michaela, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, while I'm just really excited as we enter the new year, I look forward to connecting with our neighborhood council chairs, um, and our community members there. I know for, um, District Six, we have two upcoming neighborhood council meetings. The first one is South Winds Neighborhood Council, which is this Wednesday, December eighteenth, at six PM. The meeting will take place at the cafeteria at Haycock School, and the address is fifty-four hundred Perkins Road. And then we also have another neighborhood council meeting coming up in January, um, with Blackstock South, which will take place Wednesday, January fifteenth, at six PM. The meeting will be at the South Oxnard Center, which is located at two zero two-two East Barge Street. And then we also have two upcoming toy distributions that are happening, um, within the next two weeks. The first one is this Thursday, December nineteenth, at three thirty PM, at Wyonimi High School, that will be held by Young Quicks. Um, and I know that they have a requirement specifically for ages thirteen and under, and the child must be present to receive a gift. The Port of Wyonimi is also having their, um, annual masa distribution and toy giveaway at South Winds Park on Saturday, December twenty-first, from nine AM to twelve PM. Again, I'm really excited to connect with all of our neighborhood council chairs in the new year, to really, um, talk about, um, concerns and needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Perillo?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, Calgezler Neighborhood Council is having a neighborhood council meeting. I hope that there is good attendance at that meeting tomorrow night. The Oxnard Dunes and Rose Park will have neighborhood council meetings. Both of them are well worth attending. I hope to be at both. I am looking forward to possibly a report in the future with respect to the electronic voting that we used to have up here but has broken down. When we can expect to get that back? I've been contacted by a resident in Fremont North, Fremont South, beg your pardon, past chair, very active member of the community, the first individual that brought an issue about the soil and possibly an issue with the soil that was stored there. The soil and tarps were moved today, but there was an issue with respect to the dust that was going over the armory, where those that are housed, basically the homeless, were having to deal with that. My request, and I told him I would ask it, my requested that before this goes two days, we check the dust that's on the street and we check the soil, so that there is no problem in the future going forward with Wilson, Fremont North, or any other neighborhood in that area. The reason the soil was moved, there was some contamination in the soil. The last thing, again, you know, not the last thing, beg your pardon, I wish everyone a happy birthday. This was a very sad day, and I, my total condolences to the city clerk and her family. But I would also like to state something that I heard last meeting that I didn't address, but I believe needs to be addressed for myself. When we discuss that we want to increase the education of the community, make the schools better, improve all of the things having to do with educational, we need to realize this is a civic government. This is not an educational government. They have their own boards, they have their own taxing entity, they have their own decisions whether they spend the money in the right way or hold people accountable. The city council is not involved in that. The taxpayers should not be led to believe that the funds that the taxpayers pay to the city of Oxnard takes care of the educational system. Thank you very much, Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just some quick items here. We had, last week, last Wednesday, the River Park Neighborhood Council met for their December meeting, and they had an important item, which went to a design development review today. So I just wanted to thank the neighborhood council and their executive board and all the residents who took the time to go to that. They could have been here with us that night, but they stayed in their neighborhood to do some important business, so I appreciate that. Former Mayor Zaragosa and I attended the birthday of Ruth Zavala, who is a resident of District Two in the Carriage Square neighborhood. She turned 106 years old just a few weeks ago, and many of her family were there, children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, but also some of her siblings were there. And I won't guess how old the youngest was, but the baby sibling was there too. But it was great to see so many generations in one home, but also just a reminder of the longevity we have of many of our residents, and appreciate our Senior Services Commission and Recreation for recognizing Ms. Zavala and her 106th birthday. Councilman Perillo already mentioned it regarding the dirt stockpiles being removed from the Ventura Road property owned and maintained by the Department of Airports, and I appreciate him bringing up the question that was asked. And I anticipate that the Department of Airports will work with our staff to address that. Before I finish up here, just a quick item as a follow-up from last week. At the last special meeting, there was a request by Councilmember Starr to place something on a future agenda item. I just want to use this time to state for the record, because it is the time we'll talk about future agenda items, that he had mentioned our council member procedures manual and stated that on page 11, that the mayor can bypass committees and place something onto the agenda. In reviewing page 11, it does state that each request can be bypassed, but it states at the discretion of the mayor and Mayor Protem. So I just wanted that to be made clear in case somebody did go back and look at that. And I do, as a professional, you know, and courtesy to Councilmember Starr, absolutely, you know, we can have that on the January 7th agenda for a discussion on what he had requested about potential for eliminating the council member committee system. So just wanted that stated for the record, so everybody in the public knows that that's, I'm fine with that, and that's the procedure. And as a request of the city attorney's office, Mr. City Attorney, in the future, moving forward, if we have folks from the dais or members of the public who reference the council member procedures manual that we have, can we take a pause, if needed, and pull out the manual just to confirm that we're doing what we need to do, as is stated in that policy manual?
Yes, we could do so. Typically, that particular rule that was invoked is something that can happen outside of the council meeting, and it has only come up a couple times since it's been added to the procedural rules and was addressed outside of the meeting rather than at the meeting itself. So in the future, I think, at least until the new council gets fully situated, pushing the pause button and pulling out and reading the rule, whether it's the procedures manual or a particular motion that's been raised, that parliamentary procedure issue that typically doesn't occur all the time, I've distributed some materials that hopefully will aid the council members in navigating that situation.
Thank you for that. And as was stated by the city attorney, these are conversations that can certainly happen at the meetings, but we're allowed to, Mayor, sit down with a council member making a request outside of these meetings too, and then bring it to a public meeting later, so.
Sounds good.
And the last thing, I just have Diego, if you wouldn't mind, queuing up a slide that I requested I have here, if you'll indulge me, Mayor. With the holidays around the corner, as was mentioned, happy holidays to everybody. I hope that you have time to reflect on the year we're finishing and the year that's coming up. I just want to take this moment to remind folks that it's not always the most wonderful time of the year for everyone, and some folks do not have what they feel are supportive family or social systems. And I just want to remind folks that if you yourself or you know someone who is struggling with thoughts of suicide or is in crisis, you can call 24/7 the 988 phone number from any cell phone, any landline, and you'll connect with a live person. You can also text that number. Locally, for Ventura County, you can see there the crisis referral line for anyone you feel is having a mental health emergency, and then anyone who feels that they would like to seek help or know someone to seek help with substance use services, that is the number there, the 844-385-9200. So just wanted to take that moment to give that reminder to folks that we can be supportive of everyone and ourselves in this holiday season and all year long. So thank you, Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, everyone, for their comments. I'll provide my comments as well, reflecting on last week's meeting. Boy, I couldn't even sleep Wednesday night and Thursday night. But I think that speaks to the passion that not only I, but members of this council bring. We all are wanting, I certainly am, wanting to do the very best job that I can and lead this team and create a very cohesive team, a team that brings in robust discussion, healthy disagreements, which I think are important for us. Certainly, in my request to have Mayor Protem sit next to me to my left, he shifted our council members, and I certainly didn't mean to upset Councilwoman Basuah, but reflecting on it, I don't want to create a distraction from what is the important job of all of us. I think as, especially for me, I think as we get older, we realize that I certainly am here to make this city better for all of us, so that we have a great quality of life for not only ourselves, for all of you, for our kids. And that's what I'm determined to do here. I made a quick, you know, I listened, I reflected, I heard the voices of the public. I made a small correction with, certainly with the willingness and both councilmember Starr, thank you, and councilwoman Rodriguez, thank you. We made a change in the seating arrangements here, but I'm certainly open, and we will put this out for a later time, to potentially consider in our procedures manual, we don't have it definitive, we don't have it precise how it is that we sit here, but we should be sitting in a place where we're all comfortable, wanting to do the very best job we can for all of you. So certainly, we can revisit and have a discussion whether we should do a seniority arrangement or we should do simply by districts. And we will have that discussion here, so everybody can feel comfortable and power, and it's equitable in the way we present here and the optics of it as well, too, for the public. So just want to offer that. Then also, I tell you, it was a great weekend where I was able to take a group of kids, thank you to Martin, Cato, and others from Pegasus, you may have seen on social media, I took a group of kids, five to eight years old, we took them down to Pierce College, and they participated in a soccer event. All thanks to Pegasus Transport, to provide transportation. It was a great bus. The kids, you know, got in and got out, so to the parents, we took about 60 of them. I went on that trip with them, and they all felt like professionals getting out of that bus. It was a great experience. I also was able to participate on Saturday night with a group from Tlaxcala, Mexico, over on East Pleasant Valley. They had a celebration for the Virgin Mary, and they had about 700 people there in attendance with traditional dance, great food that is specific to that region. And it just, it was an absolute great celebration. I had the conversation with them, the potentially down the road, supposed to them being out there in a bay off of Pleasant Valley Road, to bring that here to downtown, to work that in with our city leadership, to maybe have that here showcased, and that goes along with making our city a cultural destination. I also attended, early this morning, a breakfast at the Colonia Senior Center. I was there, and I tell you how impressive it was. I remember when I was the lead coordinator in Colonia, where it was just simply me and Elvina Zavala, who was the community liaison from the police department and the community. In years past, it was just the both of us. But now, there must have been a good 15 police officers there, all supported by the Oxnard Peace Officers Association, which you'll see probably on social media. I imagine they're going to post some photos. But they not only provided the food, but they actually cooked it, they served it for all the members of the senior center. So it was just, you know, both of these examples that I gave, it just goes to showcase how organizations give back, which is what we need. Oftentimes, government can't do everything, so you need nonprofits and people in general should fill those gaps that are so important to run and to have a very connected city. So thank you for hearing me out on that. If there are no other, if there are no other comments or anything from any council members, we'll move on to the next item. This is the review of information. This is the consent agenda. The members of the legislative body will consider whether to remove information, consent agenda items for discussion later during this meeting. And I've been told by our city manager that Item I-5 will be removed.
No, we're just going to have a few corrections, so we want to pull that to announce the corrections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Win. Do any council members have any consent items they wish to discuss?
Yes. And this is just because I'm mostly new, so I don't expect to be asking this many in the future, but I would like to discuss Items 4, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
I'd like to discuss 4, 6, and 9. 4, 6, and 9.
And Mayor, I must abstain from the Housing Authority, Item 4.
Must abstain from which one?
From Item 4.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Protem?
And I will need to recuse myself from voting on Item J-9, the agreement with the County of Ventura and other agencies, simply because of the nature of the work that I do, including professional work for the County of Ventura, just as an abundance of caution to not vote on that agreement. J-9.
And I apologize. Also, Number 11.
At this time, we're going to move to public comments on Information Consent Agenda. At this time, a person may address the legislative body and only on matters appearing on the Information Consent Agenda. Are there any, Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on any of these consent items?
Mayor, we do not have any comment, no request to speak on this item, on these items, sorry.
Thank you. If there are no additional speakers, what is the pleasure of City Council for the city items on the Information Consent Agenda?
So at this point, would we vote on the ones that we don't have any issues with on, and then we'd open up for comment the ones that we want to discuss?
Can you provide some clarity, City Attorney?
So, thank you, Mayor. Generally, the way that the council has been addressing this is sometimes council members wish to pull an item just to make a comment about it, sometimes they want in-depth discussion, sometimes they just seek a clarifying question. So if it's beyond a clarifying question or a comment about, you know, how good levy improvements might be, then I would recommend that you get those types of comments out of the way, and then the consent items could be voted in one block. But if there is truly a discussion about whether to move ahead with an item on the consent agenda, then that item could be pulled and action separately taken on it.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem?
Just as a question for our city attorney as well, Councilwoman Basuah and I have announced that we would need to recuse ourselves on a couple of items. Typically, if there's not extended discussion, I believe for info consent, we can remain in the dais, but if we get into discussion, do we have to step out for that particular item?
So if it's an item that's being pulled for a separate vote, I would recommend that we not treat it as an info consent item anymore, and that you do the usual recusal routine and get up from the dais after explaining your potential conflicts and leaving the room until that vote is done. But if there is not a separate vote, then you just don't participate in that discussion for that item.
City Attorney, at this time, can we, what's the advice on discussing the items that councilmember, that he brought up about, that he's got some concern, needs some clarity on?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think mostly it's questions, and perhaps if, but the questions are cleared up, there's no other action I would request, but mostly I'm trying to get better understanding how things work, and hopefully these questions will help me understand better what's going on.
Okay. City Attorney, can we, so can we bring up the...
So perhaps, since there may be some lengthy discussion on this, maybe if you take up the items where, that have been called out for questions or other potential action, and have the persons who are recusing themselves from that particular item to get up and leave the room, just to be safe and get it out of the way, if what Councilmember Starr is saying is that it might turn into something more than just questions.
Well, I think it's indicating he wants some clarity on some of the questions that, or some of the items that he brought up. Is that right, Councilmember Starr?
So why don't we start off with my just asking some questions, and then maybe we'll play it by ear at that point? So I, when you're ready, I'll be, I'd be happy to ask questions about J-4.
Okay. What are your questions with J-4?
Thank you so much. So this is the...
I'm sorry. So I'm, do I leave the room? We're talking about 4.
For now, why don't we just assume that that is the case to be on the safe side?
So I'm trying to understand this U.S. HUD rental assistance demonstration application a little bit better. I guess my first question is, is it the intention of this conversion program to transfer ownership or control of all 523 units of public housing to a not-for-profit entity? Is that kind of the runway where we're heading towards?
I mean, as Housing Director, no, sir. The intent is to convert the public housing program from a structure in which the Housing Authority for the city of Oxnard owns the property and... Authority for the City of Oxford owns the property and operates it under trust of HUD, where HUD then subsidizes the operation of the apartment complex, given that the rents are low because of the way that the public housing program works. The conversion allows the property to be operated by the Housing Authority, or whatever structure that we converted to, but in this case, the Housing Authority, to a market-rate rent structure, where it is then supported by a Section A voucher versus a public housing operation. The Section A voucher pays market rent to the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority encourages the rent revenue versus having to wait for the HUD public subsidy for operation of the apartment complex. That is what the conversion is about.
Okay. Thank you. And there's mention in the report about how this allows public housing authorities to leverage public and private debt and equity to reinvest in the public housing stock. And my question is that, given that those debt and equity holders will want a return on their money, will this require that rents be raised on these units, and will that make housing less affordable for the people that are there?
Yes, rents will be raised to a market condition. And that rent revenue is what would allow the service of debt, whether that's a bond or a loan or something. The rents that are then being paid allows for that service of debt, and allows for us to manage it as a private operation. So from the first part of your question is, yes, rents get raised. Second part of your question is that the tenants do not feel the increase in the rents because the Section A voucher covers their need just as if it was public housing. So instead of it being a public housing rent structure, it is a Section A rent structure. The difference is that instead of HUD sending us a subsidy to mow the lawn and et cetera, we collect the market rent and then are responsible for our own operation of our own apartment complex.
So you'd say that the tenants won't be adversely impacted by this?
The tenants will not be adversely impacted at all. They don't have to move, they can transition in place. For that matter, it should be a benefit to them, inasmuch as right now, we do not have the ability to cause for major improvements to the apartment complexes that we own, because we are subject to the continuing subsidy from HUD. And we have to wait for a five-year plan to, say, make improvements to the HVAC system. In this case, we will collect the rent, and we can make those improvements. Secondly, the tenant now has a Section A voucher, known as a housing choice voucher. The housing choice voucher, the basic tenet of it is that they have a choice, which means that they can take the voucher and go anywhere in the United States. In public housing, they're not. If they move out of the public housing, they lose their subsidy.
Okay. And some of these units that are upgraded, are there any cases where the tenant would be displaced for a while and have to find housing elsewhere, or is that some...
That is a potential, yes. And if that is a need, then the conversion and the public housing authority and HUD funds are required to temporarily or permanently relocate that person and protect their voucher status wherever they would go to. They can temporarily relocate to a different site and come back, or permanently relocate with a Section A voucher.
Okay. And there was some mention about this funding could be either a project-based voucher model or a project-based rental assistance model, and I'm not completely clear on what the distinction is between those two, which one we are choosing and why.
The Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, or RAD, is nomenclature to the idea of what conversion is. Conversion is essentially that, that we refinance it so that the housing, local housing authority owns it instead of under trust from HUD. That's big picture. But the program itself, called Rental Assistance Demonstration, is just what it's called. The effect after conversion, whether it be a RAD or Section eighteen or a myriad of other models for conversion, is that when, at post-conversion, the tenant is now assisted by a Section A voucher, which is project-based. In other words, it's attached to a project specifically to that unit.
Project-based. All right. And another question, I see that we're using a company called Low Income Housing Tax Credit Development Group, LLC, to provide us with technical assistance. I'm wondering if you could tell me what that technical assistance involves and how much they're charging us for this assistance, if that's known.
Brenda, how much was the contract?
And it's okay, it's okay to say if you don't know right now, you can get it to me.
I don't have it memorized, but we have it.
Okay.
So the consultant that we procured, which we procured faithfully, responsibly, with, thank you, with, through the use of HUD funds and et cetera, is called LICTH, okay? So Low Income Housing Tax Credits. They are helping us to assess the refinance model, to assess the improvements, the construction cost, the application to HUD. They're going to submit the application, assuming that you approve today, which is due on December thirty-first. So they're helping us with all of those models. The agreement with LICTH was approved by the Board of Commissioners on November fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, for an amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions. That's very helpful. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Emilio. Thank you very much.
I have questions on four.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The, I appreciate this. I know that there's a need, Housing Director, but what I would like to know, in the movement from one agency to another, how does the verification of the legitimacy of the people involved, how is that verified? Is it federal government, local housing authority? How is it re-verified? I know that there's a tremendous amount of want in this neighborhood, in this community nationwide, but I want to make sure that we have something that everyone can understand, how do we verify that someone is not taking advantage of a situation that would benefit others, and they are not entitled to receive that. I am not against Section eight, I'm not against affordable housing, but I am against abuses of the system very strongly.
Thank you, sir. The answer to your question is multi-part, and so first, let me start with the effect of the conversion. The public housing apartment complexes that we are proposing to convert into this structure that I just explained are already full. There's tenants in them. And that conversion, we are going to protect their tenancy within those apartment complexes. So they have a stated right to remain in their units, given that they have already been pre-eligible, pre-qualified to move into those apartment complexes. They're very well sought out, they don't move out, they don't become vacant very often, especially the senior ones. And so they have a continuing right to remain. I say that because when a person moves in to, when a person applies for and then is qualified to move into an apartment complex, we do a variety of eligibility check, low-income status, et cetera, residency status, all those kinds of things. And those are requirements for when a person is starting to receive the public housing rental assistance or Section A rental assistance. They're similar. And we have, we are required to check those eligibility requirements per HUD. In this case, however, because they're already there, and because HUD does not want us to displace anybody that is already living in the units that we have already pre-qualified and have been recertifying annually, then they simply just transition. We do not have a requirement, nor HUD does, wants us to recheck their eligibility anew today, given that they were qualified to move in when they moved in. And so they want us to protect their tenancy so that we don't displace somebody. But at the beginning of their tenancy, they had to qualify for eligibility, for residency status, et cetera.
Thank you very much. You've answered my question, Mr. Ramirez. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Perez?
Yes, thank you so much. It says here in the report, "At least two more meetings will be held with residents to provide an update on conversion plans and solicit feedback on proposed improvement, management, and services." What's the timeline on those meetings?
They have to occur before we start to the actual conversion process, and before we do any improvements of the sites. So we don't know exactly when that refinance process will occur, or when the construction might occur for the improvements. I expect that that will be at least a year before we undertake that full effort. And so within the next year, we will have those two meetings. I can also tell you that we started this process maybe two years ago. We coined the app called We Think and Renew, and we've had, I don't know, fifty meetings? I don't even know. Many. So along the way, we are going to share details. We're going to fix this bathroom, we're going to change that kitchen, that cabin, et cetera. So those kind of community meetings will occur as we get closer to those improvements.
Thank you.
There is only three buildings that can you work on, on the future, you coming more?
I'm sorry, sir, I did not understand.
There's only three buildings that can you work on?
For this first round, yes, we are proposing...
On the future, is coming more?
We are proposing eventually to convert everything that we own in the city. We own five hundred and twenty-three public housing units throughout the city. That's the entire stock that the Housing Authority owns. So eventually, we will propose to convert everything. Right now, the initial application is for three public housing sites, including the two senior public housing sites in downtown, on C Street, and another one on Althea Court. You may remember, sir, that Althea Court suffered from a fire, and we haven't been able to rebuild that one building in that apartment complex that we lost, largely because we don't have the funding to do it, because we're under the public housing structure that we have right now. Once we move over, we will have the ability to leverage the rent revenue such that we can generate the cash to rebuild that apartment complex. That's why it's on the first list. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other clarification questions on J four? Okay, I think you also, Councilmember Starr had a question on J five as well, and I know that they submitted a minor update. Oh, yes, thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Portem. Councilmembers Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works. In front of you for item J five is a clarification memo. So this is a staff report that is awarding a project for one of our park playground replacement projects. As part of that staff report, there's an attachment, that attachment is an agreement, and that agreement has many exhibits that are attached to it. We had some errors in those attachments, not material to the agreement itself. The agreement's correct, the staff report's correct, but some of the attachments were incorrect attachments, they're actually from the same company but for a different project. And so what we're suggesting is that we just replace all of the exhibits with the ones that are in front of you in the memo package. Doesn't change the contract, doesn't change the recommendation, just some paperwork to clean up some of the issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Starr, what specific clarification questions did you have for J five?
So my questions were not on five, but four, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Oh, I apologize. I thought I had five as well. Yes, yes, or Councilman Perillo? Number six, okay. So I think we're all good with number five. We'll go to number six. Councilmember Perillo?
As with number five, we're going to replace playgrounds. And I'd asked in the past, we had some real bad characters in our city burn down the playground at West Village. These playgrounds are running between two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Is there any new information with respect to possibly more vandalized proofing them, or any reward system, or any information after finding who did this work? And I know that is not on the agenda, but I think it's pertinent to ask now, because if we're replacing the same thing with what an individual was able to do, a tremendous amount of damage, it gives me some caution.
I'm not going to be able to speak towards the investigation component, so maybe one of the officers can come up and talk about that. But for the requirements for the playground itself, it has to meet certain safety standards. Most of them have some sort of galvanized or coded structural members. We anticipate, or we think that the issue that you're talking about, there was some accelerant used, or some other means of actually burning the, what's basically kind of a poly...
An arsonist, an arsonist, basically.
So I can't speak to that, but all of our playground equipment has to meet certain standards from a safety perspective, and most of the structural components are made out of some aluminum or steel. The play equipment itself could be based on a plastic-based purpose. But maybe one of the, if you want to talk about the investigation, I'm not able to speak to that.
And I understand that. I don't know if they can talk about it either, but I hope that this council does not forget that, because if they have taken the opportunity to go to West Village and seen the damage done, it's extremely significant. And with respect to the changes that you want on five, do we need to have a separate motion to put those changes in, or just approving the item?
So my recommendation would be that the motion for the consent item include the fact that we're going to include these changes. That'd be my recommendation.
I'm satisfied with my, thank you very much, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Councilmember Portem?
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, just looking at the agreements and the attachments in the staff report, it seems that in, when we've done playground projects in the past, we've had some inclusive features. Do we know, just kind of off the cuff, if we'll have some inclusive features in these playgrounds that are before us on these, in the info consent items? I see Mr. Hallett's walking up.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, Steve Hallett, Assistant Public Works Director. All of our playgrounds are ADA compliant, they are by law, and then when it comes to accessibility, that goes into more inclusion, that's a higher level. Yes, all of our playgrounds do have inclusive components, that's part of the bid component. So things like inclusive swing, we're moving to put inclusive swings in all of our playgrounds, as well as ground-level activities and other such items for full-inclusive activities.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hallett. And for folks who may not be familiar, I would highly recommend that you go to some of our newer playgrounds in the city that have these inclusive features. Durley Park comes to mind, as well as, I believe, East Park and Crescent Park in River Park. And I'm sure there are others that I'm not thinking of off the top of my head, but those two do come to mind if folks would like to see what these features look like. Did you have something else, Mr. Wolf?
Just to add, we also do retrofits. Sometimes we would go back and retrofit some of the existing playground structures with some inclusive items, so we've done that as well.
Great. Thank you. That was my only question, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, I just had a clarification question. When it comes to the design of these playgrounds, do we involve community that lives in that specific region?
Yeah, so Mr. Hallett, or some of his team members, would go to the neighborhood council and show some examples of different elements that could be used for the playground. Now, we have to be relatively careful about how we include that information in our bid packages, and not specifically stating one manufacturer over another, but we certainly include input from the community in terms of, normally neighborhood council meetings.
Sure. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions on J six? Councilmembers, no? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Starr, you had, I think, a question on J seven. What's your question?
So several questions. I did notice that there was only one responsive bidder, and I'm just wanting to get a better understanding of what efforts are made to obtain additional bidders.
So we go through our procurement process, which would be putting it out on the state's website, procurement websites, so we would go through that standard. If it's required, we put in a localized newspaper, we would put the advertisement in a localized newspaper, depending on specific requirements, and maybe even the funding source. So we typically go through the required notification process, whether that's our city website for procurement, a procure website, and I'm blanking on the name of that website, and then newspaper notifications.
Do we ever reach out to just known vendors that provide these services? Because sometimes, I mean, I don't know about you, but when I look at newspaper ads, these tombstone ads don't, I don't really notice them that much.
So we typically want to make sure we are inconsistent, or are consistent with the purchasing policy, so the policy allow, if the policy allows for that, then our purchasing folks will do that. There are certain instances where we can't just go to one, as you can imagine. So to the extent that our purchasing policy allows that, we would reach out to the different vendors. So, to the extent that our purchasing policy allows that, we would reach out to the different vendors, especially if they were somebody that is a previous vendor as well.
Right. And I noticed that, so, this is a million-dollar blanket order covering five years. And so, I assume that, of course, what the actual amount will be probably less in the end unless, I guess, we ask for an increase. But what I don't, what I'd like to see in this type of report in the future would be what the comparable level of spend would be for the previous periods because I don't really have a good gauge as to whether a million dollars over the next five years is double what we were spending the previous five years, is it half? I would make you say, so, that's just a request for the future?
To speak to that, just to kind of put out sort of this perspective, is the spend amount is actually the budgeted amount. This is a purchase order. So, this is like a hand in glove. So, the council has authorized a spend amount in the budget. This is the mechanism that allows us to spend it. And so, that information is more apropos to a budget conversation than a PO. But we certainly can put some statistics that kind of show the past purchases of similar style.
That would help because right now, I feel like I'm making a decision in a vacuum and without any anchor point, I just had a hard time deciding whether this is like, it's a million dollars, that's great, or it's a million dollars, that's horrible. I have no, I just don't have any feel for that based on the information I see right now. One question I have is on the prices that are on the bid tabulation sheet. Are those guaranteed not to increase for the five-year duration of the contract or are there somehow adjustments later on? How does that work?
So, I'm going to bring up the person that has the most knowledge of the contract and whether or not there's a CPI adjuster in there.
Hi, Councilmember Starr. Elle McCarron, Assistant City Attorney. Typically, with purchase orders, we hold them to the dollar amount for the entire time. Sometimes, things might rise, you never know, and then they'll have to come back and adjust, and we will have to accept it or we can hold them to the price. So, typically, not all purchase orders have a CPI, and I don't believe this one does either. That's typically something we see more in our general service agreements.
Thank you. And I can see that it'd be convenient to have a one-stop shop to obtain these supplies, but I'm wondering if that convenience comes at a price. And I'll describe what I'm looking at. So, I did a, just a cursory search online for the price of decomposed granite. And when the first entry I saw showed a typical cost ranging from thirty-eight to seventy-five dollars per cubic yard, and I found other comparable sources in that range. But when I look at the bid tabulation sheet, I see a hundred-and-fifty-three dollars per cubic yard. And then, when I look at landscape fabric, which I can get at Home Depot for like thirty-four dollars for a four-foot-by-hundred-foot roll, the bid tabulation shows a much higher figure, forty-nine. So, what I'm wondering is, are we paying a price for convenience? I want to make sure we can demonstrate to the public that what we're paying is competitive and not overpaying. Could you guide me with that?
Yeah, so, my, one of the suggestions would be to make sure we're doing an apples-to-apples comparison. So, just going and looking at Home Depot for, you know, maybe some granite, decomposed granite, you've got to look at our specifications. So, our specifications could require to meet some sort of ASTM standard or some sort of requirement. So, I guess I would not put a lot of emphasis on doing a comparison unless it's a truly apples-to-apples comparison. So, without knowing, you know, what your parameters you put in there, I couldn't speak to whether or not it makes sense from that perspective. I will say that part of what we're trying to do here is the responsiveness to our customers has been an issue that has been brought to my attention, at least in the three years I've been here. And so, when we don't have these kinds of mechanisms that are in place that allow us to do this huge upfront procurement process, to follow the checks and balances of our procurement process, we are required to do that for every single time we go out and buy something. And so, when a customer or a client or a resident says, hey, you know what? We'd like you to fix X. And we say, okay, well, we have to run through four months with the procurement for X, we're trying to put another tool in our toolbox to respond to those requests in a much quicker fashion. And sometimes, those responses come with a little extra cost.
Right. And what would be helpful for me as a council member is just to understand what is that premium? Sometimes, it makes a lot of sense, but I don't have any way of kind of gauging what that premium is that we're paying for the convenience of going to just one place to buy everything. Okay. That's all the questions I have for seven.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Starr. Is your, yes, sir, Councilmember Perillo?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question with that. Mr. Wolf, Director of Public Works, can you get a little more elaborate with respect to some of the jobs that we do, some of the locations, mediums, parks, wherever we are doing? Because it's a public entity, there is very specific types of material we can use. It isn't just, for lack of a little more silly, it's not going to the beach and getting a bucket of sand and putting the sand. We can't do that. There are very specific requirements that we have to meet, and if we don't, we have a problem. Can you get a little more elaborate, please?
Right. And so, I try to mention some of those certain standards that we have, whether they're safety standards or ASTM standards or certification requirements. And so, you know, when we utilize material and supplies, whether they need to meet our city standards, whether they need to meet a certain code of federal regulations standards, whether they need to meet an ASTM standard. So, we, again, we just, like, your example is a great example. We just don't get sand. It has to meet a certain requirement, has to meet a certain health requirement, has to meet a certain certification requirement. And so, those typically come with a little additional cost associated with those testing and certification requirements. And so, that would be the example that I would give, is the exact same example that you talked about. Now, part of what you're talking about is if, depending on where we may use that. And so, let's say, for example, we use that in a median, and we just don't send people running out in the middle of traffic to go install that. And the median requires traffic control, requires certain safety guidelines, things like that. So, there's additional costs that come with working in the public right-of-way. There's additional costs that come with requiring them to have certified payroll, like, they need to be able to meet the prevailing wage requirements. So, the contractor or the vendor, in those kinds of scenarios where they're paying for salaries and wages, have to meet certain requirements. So, we have all those protections in place or minimums in place or requirements in place, whether they are state procurement requirements, our local requirements, or our local regulations.
Thank you very much for the additional information. I hope it's helpful to my councilmembers.
Sure. Yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And just as another example, or just to just kind of put a button on this or a bow on this, to Councilmember Perillo's comment there in question, when we look at our road markings, for example, we can't just, we don't have just house paint, you know, and folks there are just putting a stencil down for a stop and then painting over the stencil. There is actually, I believe, there's acrylic and different options we have for the paint, but there's also reflective glass beads that are put down into that to set it to a standard that traffic engineering requires. And if we don't do those things or we try to save money by saying, well, let's just, what's it matter? Let's just get some water-based paint, we'll lay it on the street there. There are some liabilities involved in not following what the industry standards or the expected standards are for that.
Right. And so, that example would be the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, commonly referred to as the MUTCD. That'll dictate all those requirement, minimum requirements in terms of reflectivity, types of paint, the material used, even the size of the letters, all those things get dictated. And if not, then we would certainly open ourselves up for potential litigation if something would happen.
Yeah, there are certain responsibilities and obligations we have to meeting those standards. And to circle it back to this item, I believe that when we look at things like decomposed granite, we could certainly go to Home Depot and pick it up or, you know, buy it from someone. But there is a process for a reason, and there are standards for these reasons. So, I appreciate your willingness to share that in-depth information. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just add, you know, having been in public government for the last thirty-five years, I know there's a robust bidding process that takes place as well, so I'm very comfortable with your report. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions on J seven, we'll go to, I think, Councilmember Starr, you brought up J eight as well. You want some clarification on that? Okay.
So, this has to do with the agreement with North Hills Recycling for the on-call engineering fiber mulch and bark delivery and services. And I do note that we had an agreement prior with another company called Turboscape. And it did seem kind of strange to me that the incumbent vendor was unable to submit a bid that complied with the requirements. And so, I'm wondering, maybe the previous agreement with Turboscape didn't include prices per single cubic yard? I'm just trying to figure out what happened where they weren't able to bid because they could have offered a lower price and actually they wanted to, I think.
I wish I knew the answer to that question because we welcome and want many, many bids. And so, I can't put myself inside of a bidder's, you know, thought process and why they weren't able to fill out the documents correctly or in conformance with the requirements. And so, you know, I don't really have, I can't speak for the contractor that wasn't able to fill out the information correctly.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a one-year agreement for up to five-hundred-thousand dollars. And one thing that would be helpful for me as a council member is knowing for comparison purposes, how much did we spend during the last twelve months with the prior vendor, for example? So, I don't expect you to have that at the top of your head here, but that sort of thing would be something I'd love to see in future reports. I'd also like to get a better idea of roughly what the product mix was. You have a number of items here that are being bought, and I don't know whether it's typical that these items are spread by the vendor, they're not spread, they're spread by us, blown in, I don't know.
Good evening, Council. Anthony Miller, Special District Manager. So, if I can address, I think, the core of the question is what the product mix, meaning, for example, whether or not city staff or a contractor is spreading it and depending on material type?
Correct.
Okay. So, more often than not, these agreements, particularly for mulch and things along those lines, oftentimes are landscape-related. This is particularly focused in on delivery method, and it's primarily for seeking efficiencies here. A lot of landscape companies don't typically maintain or have at their disposal a method of essentially blowing in this material. This solicitation was primarily geared towards large quantities of material in a very short period of time, effectively, which is what Turboscape, like you mentioned earlier, was quite good at doing. So, in terms of different types and that method of installation, this was, actually sought to expand upon our previous agreement, which was only for one particular type of mulch and was only for one particular type of method of delivery. We tried to just give ourselves some more options with solicitation.
So, what was the method of delivery we had before? Was it all, was it all hand-installed? Was it blown in?
It was previously all blown in.
Okay. All right. And for the future, do you expect it's just going to be typically blown in? And there wouldn't be any just delivery without, you know, maybe we'd be installing it ourselves?
I would have to speculate that we would likely be doing blown in with this, mostly due to the fact that these quantities that are typically ordered under an agreement like this are usually larger, it's for larger areas, and blown in is the most efficient way of doing that. However, in order to run the solicitation and give us as many options as possible, we included other categories.
And do we ever spread the product ourselves with our own city staff or is it always an outside contractor that does that?
Would say there's no, nothing restricting us from doing that. We have done it in the past with park staff or other divisions, yes.
Okay. And I got a hold of a copy of the RFP, and from what I reread, it appears that the city reserves the right to award more than one contract for the services being procured. And given, I see that one company, Aggraman, which is a local outfit here, since they offer significantly lower prices for the materials that are delivered but not hand-installed or blown in, I'm curious why we wouldn't, why wouldn't we also execute a contract with Aggraman so that, that way, we can take advantage of those lower prices if we ever have a situation where we just want the product delivered and we're handling through some other vendors or ourselves, either the hand-installing or the blowing in of the materials?
Sure. Again, Elle McCarron, Assistant City Attorney. And to that question, that is standard language in the bid packages. However, the bid package has to be set up to show a multiple award schedule. This particular bid package wasn't. It was based on the lowest aggregate price of whoever could provide all material. So, right now, we are trying to transition all of our bid packages to, for things like this and maybe the landscape supplies, to have more of a matrix, if you will. Do you know what I'm saying? Where we can kind of pick and choose who has the best. This was not bid that way. So, then, we get into an issue where if we're basing it on the aggregate volume or price of everything, there's a government code section that states we have to pay the lowest aggregate price in our bid. So, we aren't able to go with Aggraman this time.
Right. And I noticed in that aggregate bid, it seems like each of these items are given equal weighting, effectively, even though we don't really have an equal weighting as far as the use of these products goes or the delivery of these products goes.
Oh, in terms of maybe one gets used more than the other?
Yeah.
It's whatever staff needs. We just look at it as a per-unit price.
Well, I guess what I hope in the future is if we do have a situation where one method of delivery could result in a much lower price, which is what I'm seeing here, I'm hoping that we can get creative with how we put together our bids so that we can take advantage of these lower prices. Because right now, it just, I mean, it's the difference in price is quite stunning to the extent that it's just a delivery-only, no installation.
So, I wanted to go back to the question you had before because I think part of your question, I may be reading into it, is potentially setting up a sort of a selection-based criteria that has different weighted values, if you will. And when we do services like this, we're not allowed to do those kinds of weighted values. We have to do a low bid process. So, we're not allowed to set some weighted value component. Now, later on tonight, we'll talk about a project where we have that process by which we're allowed, either by state law or our local code and ordinance and our policies that allow us to have some weighted values. So, I think that was potentially part of your question before as well.
Right. So, I guess perhaps in the future, if we can consider breaking up these purchase orders into pieces so that, you know, to put out a bid for one way of delivery versus another, I'm just, like I said, I don't like leaving money on the table here. If I can, if I can get something for less money, I'd love to be able to take advantage of that. So, there's not a criticism of how it's done now, just how my mind thinks.
Sure.
Understood.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I appreciate the thorough evaluation of how we're conducting business, but I also want you all to consider staff time and make sure that we don't spend more time breaking things down so much to the point where, you know, it has to be a significant cost savings. And I just think that as a council, we should really evaluate how much time we get into the weeds of any of this. And I appreciate the big picture and the purchase order. You gave a lot of description, and I appreciate the feedback, the cost impact and everything else. But working at the community college system, sometimes even returning a shipment may cost us more staff time than it takes to just bite the bullet. And I guess it depends on how much we're talking about. I don't want to get into the weeds right now, just to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Yes, sir, Councilmember Perillo?
City Attorney McHernan, we operate on the bid process. We are totally within the law. We do nothing that would be viewed outside the law in our process. There may be different ways of doing it, but this is totally above-board, legal, no questions. That has been my understanding as the Chair of the Public Works for quite a while and even on this item. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct. We are required to go with the provider who fulfills every single category for the lowest actual price. That's how this was bid. There's different ways we are looking to bid these types of things in the future that will definitely lend themselves to Councilmember Starr's concerns.
Those are very good questions he asked, but I understand when you go on a big bid, if you want to cherry-pick certain items, you can get a better deal if you cherry-pick. But the individual that might be cherry-picked can't deliver and everything else, so it's best not to go there. That's why I asked the question. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Perillo. Any further discussion on item J eight? Okay. I understand, Mayor Protem, Terren has, do you have to excuse yourself from J nine? Okay. Yes, sir, City Attorney.
So, for clarification, now that we've seen how the questioning is going, the Fair Political Practices Regulation regarding- Practices Regulation regarding leaving the room requirement is if a matter on consent agenda is contested, they don't really describe what contested is, but it does, if it is contested, then this exception wouldn't apply, and leaving the room would be required. However, if it's not a contested item and merely there's discussion and Q and A, then the council member with the conflict doesn't need to leave the dais.
Okay. Because I don't think anyone's expressing that they're contesting, other than seeking clarifications.
That's what I've seen so far. However, so for both council members that have stated that they have potential conflict, you need to be specific on the conflict, the basis for the conflict that you have. So if Councilwoman Basua can specify what the potential financial interest is.
We use the same vendors. In my nine-to-five job, we do business with LIHTC, who is the current vendor for the City of Oxnard Housing Authority.
And that is your position with the Port Wainimi Housing Authority?
That is correct.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. Just in the consulting work that I do, I have professional work that I provide for school districts and then also with the County of Ventura, specifically with public health. And while this is not falling under the public health realm, there are previous items where I have recused out of an abundance of caution just because it is the same entity, which is the County of Ventura, which is a massive entity, but just based on the FPPC opinion that we were given on a remote interest on items that come to particular agencies with which I do contract work.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I know we've all had an opportunity to review the reports. We're not contesting any of the items. Were we just seeking clarification questions?
Sorry, for nine and 10, I won't be contesting anything. I'm just mostly just trying to get a better understanding.
Okay.
Thank you. So the council members can stay, but you just cannot participate in the discussion and, of course, recuse yourself from the vote on the items that pertain to you.
So Mr. Fisher, just for clarification, so when we're going into, we're pulling an item for discussion, must we say that we might contest the item? That way, if we do have a conflict, we leave? Or, I mean, because, I mean, how are we going to know whether or not we should remain?
So the way the regulation from the Fair Political Practices Commission is written, it would indicate that the council member that has an issue with the item should identify that they are contesting it.
Right. Okay. So we have to state that we are contesting it, or we just have questions, I guess? Clarification questions?
Yes. That appears to be the standard based on the regulation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But of course, as you clarify, you could come to contest.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Understood.
Councilmember Perlo, did you have, it was number J nine?
I have a question for the city attorney on the item we just discussed. Can I feel comfortable or uncomfortable in this situation? If we have Mayor Protem potentially doing contracts with the county, anytime the potential for a contract with the county would come up, he would be in a spot where he, to his best interest and best benefit, and to protect him, he should recuse himself? I don't want to lose the individual's input on the council, but I want to know the answer to that question. Because it seems that anytime a school issue comes up, potentially, he could do business with the school, so we would not possibly allow him to be involved in a decision on that. Is it the same with the County of Ventura now?
So as I've explained to individual council members several times, you're responsible for managing your own conflicts, and we have certainly worked with Mayor Protem Turan on this particular issue, to the point of seeking guidance from the FPPC on it. And ultimately, it's his decision whether to recuse himself or participate in an item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll move to item J nine. I know Councilmember Perlo had a question on J nine, so we'll start with you, Councilmember Perlo. What clarification question you have?
Thank you very much, Mayor. On this specific item, on page 184 of the city staff, and it's talking about Santa Clara River TMDL's bacteria. It is the only one that I see that Oxnard is involved in. Is that because of the proximity to the ocean, the Pacific Ocean, where our city is in location?
So I'll let our wastewater division manager, Jan Hauser, answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jan Hauser. I'm the wastewater division manager. We also handle the operation and maintenance of our storm sewer system and compliance with our storm sewer permit. So can you repeat the question again, Councilmember Perlo?
Thank you, Mr. Hauser, and I appreciate the work you do. On this particular item, there are three components listed, Santa Clara River TMDL's bacteria, nitrogen compounds, and chlorine, and that identifies responsible parties. Of those three categories, Oxnard is only listed under bacteria. Is it because we are the end line of the Santa Clara River, where it would go into the Pacific Ocean, and that's where we'd address bacteria? Because I'm just thinking, common sense, Fillmore, Santa Paula County, Ventura Watershed Protection District, they could all put bacteria upriver. It's kind of like the story of, you know, let's forget that. That's...
So the way this TMDL, and this is a scientific, technical analysis of the water quality in certain water bodies, right? And the Santa Clara River was broken into reaches. I think it was five different reaches. And then there's a period of time where they're grabbing water quality samples and checking the levels of certain things, right? So the other two that we're not involved in are upstream of us. So we are, the City of Oxnard is not contributing to the exceedances upstream, because the water flows downstream, obviously. So the part we are involved in, the bacteria, is the furthest downstream reach, the closest to the ocean. And so everybody upstream contributes to that. So Fillmore's in there, and Santa Paula. So everybody upstream that contributes to the downstream reach is part of that bacteria TMDL.
If there are any sanctions, would they be shared evenly among the parties that are listed under bacteria?
So I think that's a legal question, and I don't really know the answer to that. I assume so, but I don't know. I don't know. If you want, try to take a right with that.
So those, the regulation, the regulators on that get to make some pretty wide decisions based on what they see. And so I think our answer would be, there's a possibility, but it's all going to be based on the way the regulator would see potentially a violation. This is a permit, right? So these are permit requirements that we're getting from the regional board. And so the permit requirements state that we have a TMDL, and that's the total maximum daily load. That's, as Jan was mentioning, that's the chemistry analysis. And so if we violate the permit or violate the TMDL, the regulatory body would have the opportunity to find us, and the means and methods and the proportionment of that is up to them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Hauser, thank you. This is the end of my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Perlo. Councilmember Starr?
So, yeah, Perlo actually raised me to the question I have, but I want to do a little bit of a follow-up. So I guess what I'm not clear on is, it doesn't look like we're on the hook for any nitrogen compounds or chlorides, and I guess that's maybe just a regulatory decision. But just to verify, we do generate such discharges, don't we, for, into the storm sewer system?
I'm sorry, we do what?
We generate such discharges into the storm sewer system, nitrogen compounds and chlorides.
Not into the storm drain system. That wouldn't be, we would, if your question is whether or not the city as a operation discharges those kinds of things in the storm system, the answer to that would be no. Now, as you can imagine, that you can trace a drop of water from the sky that hits a street that has break dust or things like that. So there may be these kinds of things that get into the stormwater system, but it's not us as an agency, as an operator, discharging into the storm drain system.
Okay. And by the way, I want to start off by saying, I really love it when we're able to share costs with other agencies, like we are here. So whoever came up with that, just thumbs up to you. So I do have a request that on, you know, future items of this nature, that when we're showing what the spending plan is, of course, that we have some historical, so I can compare, just similar to what I've said in other items. I do have a question. I was looking at the older versions of this agreement, and it looked like they were contemplating at one point that Caltrans would also become a party at some point that could also share the costs. I'm wondering, is that something that is still being pursued, or the TMDL is dictating, right?
So this is specifically to the TMDL requirements. And so that, again, is a directive from the regulatory body, who is responsible for that. But your point is taken. So we do have a regional approach for a lot of our storm drain compliance requirements. It's a regional permit, so the permit really is, in fact, across all the county, and the rainwater doesn't care where the line between Camarillo and Oxnard is, right? So there is some level of cooperation, and Jan's team has been able to build this coalition with several other agencies in the county. And so to the effect that that technical working group has identified different places where agencies should participate, they do participate. Now, this is, again, directed from the permit process, and so the permit's saying, these are the agencies that are responsible, so these are the agencies that will be entering into this shared agreement. But the agreement itself is a, is part of a bigger conversation that we have with the county and other local and regional agencies about stormwater compliance from the permit standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. If there are no other questions on J nine, we'll move to J 10. And Councilmember Starr, I think you had a question on J 10.
So this is more of a request for information in the future. So I would request that future versions of this report, this is the city manager contract/purchase order list, I request that the future versions of this report include the timeframe of the contract. So, for example, I see that we're spending $200,000 with Culligan for bottled water and reverse osmosis. And it sounds like a lot of money if this is one year, but maybe it might seem a lot more reasonable if this is, let's say, for a five-year duration. And it would give me a better understanding of what we're spending and whether it's something that I want to drill deeper into. Also, when possible, when we have a contract, it'd be great to see some historical spend if that information is ever available. And those are my only couple requests. And thank you. Everybody did a great job answering questions.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion or any clear, I'm sorry, yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a quick addition to the request by Councilmember Starr, that would certainly be good context for this report for the public. At any given time, any of the council members or the members of the public, they have access to these ahead of this meeting and throughout the year. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the work you put into these reports. It's much appreciated. I know I spent a considerable amount of time reading through them, and clearly, it's a lot of work that goes into them, so thank you for that. So if all the questions have been answered, is there a motion by any council member to approve the consent agenda items?
Is there any questions?
I don't think there were any questions raised on 11, but thank you, Councilmember Perlo. Any questions on 11?
No, I just have to recuse myself from that vote.
From number 11 as well? Okay.
And the same basis for your refusal?
Same basis.
And along those lines, Mayor, when we get to the vote, if we get a first and second, I will be recusing myself from item J nine.
Mayor, may we have a motion for the housing authority, which would be J four? If we can start with that one? We can have a motion and a second for J four for the housing commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember, I mean, Commissioner Andrade?
Yes.
Commissioner Basua? Upstate. Oh, sorry. Chair MacArthur?
This is for J four, correct?
J four only.
Yes.
Commissioner Perlo?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Starr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Teran?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries seven to one with Commissioner Basua abstaining. Thank you.
Should we move on to J six?
Mayor, if we can have a motion for items one through three, five through eight, and 10.
Okay.
If we can have a motion...
So just one through three first?
It would be from items one through three, five through eight, and item 10, on the information and consent agenda. If we can have a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion and adopt staff's recommendations for one through three, five through eight, and 10.
Thank you.
I will second.
Then can we get a vote?
Quick, Mr. Mayor. Would Councilmember Starr be willing to state for the record the memo that was provided by the Public Works Director, just as a quick amendment for the items respective to this?
Sure. We'll say, "By theirs amended."
Thank you. Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion carries seven to zero. If we can have a motion for item J nine only?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Recusing.
Thank you for the record. Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Thank you. And finally, may we have a motion for item J 11 only?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye. I'm sorry, I'm recusing.
Thank you for the record. Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion for this item carries six to one.
City Attorney, is it at this time that the Housing Authority Commissioner is excused? Are we there?
There is no additional business for the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, so that would be appropriate, Mayor.
Thank you. Great seeing you today, Commissioner. The next item on the agenda is item K one, the Housing Department. The subject, Consultant Professional Services Agreement for Real Estate Services with CBRE. The recommendation from the Housing Department is that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute a consultant and professional services agreement with CBRE for real property services for an initial term of 18 months with three one-year options to extend for an agreement amount not to exceed $675,000. Commissioner, bye. Sorry, it's just been a while since I've seen the Commissioner. Thank you. Do any council members have questions for staff on this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So I see that CBRE was the only respondent to the city's RFP, and I was just wondering what efforts were made to obtain additional bidders. what efforts were made to obtain additional bidders, and what can we do in the future to get additional bidders?
We published the procurements per policy. We did solicit responses from real estate agents that would represent. We did receive responses indicating that they would not be submitting, and CBRE did respond.
Do you have any idea why the reason, what the reason was, why they wouldn't submit bids? Those that?
I didn't ask those questions.
Okay. So I noticed that when we include the costs of subcontractors and third parties, it appears we're going to be spending about $12,500 per month over a 54-month period, and I guess that figure doesn't include commissions. I guess one thing I'd like to know is, the amount that we're spending in the future, how does it compare to in the past? We've been contracted with CBRE, I think we had a contract with CBRE back in 2019?
It's commensurate, sir.
Okay.
I mean, cost of living increases, but it's commensurate. We, I am proposing a restructure of the agreement from the previous turn from 2019. And so the $50,000 that you referenced, Councilman, is not, it is not a fork-on-conclusion that it will get spent.
Right.
So the $100,000 is divided by 12 months, and that is a retainer service that will be paid. But in case of a transaction, that is when the $50,000 gets used. And that's, honestly, a lesson that I learned in the acquisition of the 2900 Saviors Building. And in that process, when we come to council to acquire any property, because the council ultimately has to approve the acquisition of property and that expenditure, in that case, I didn't have enough third-party to pay for the appraisals, the inspections, and all those kinds of things that we had to incur. Admittedly, they were built into the cost of the transaction, but before I can get to a transaction to propose to council, I had to spend money on an appraisal and et cetera. And so that's what the $50,000 is for, in case we end up having to do that. We will recover it via the transaction, and the commissions don't get paid unless there's a transaction that gets closed and all of those things. But that's why that is there. It's not necessarily because we're going to expend the $12,000 monthly, we're just in case we need it.
So in the previous agreement that we had, did that include everything, and now you're splitting it up so that this is?
It didn't include those third-party vendors.
Okay.
And so I had to eat into the monthly retainer cost. I recaptured it when we closed escrow on the 2900 Saviors Building, but I had to eat into that $100,000 monthly retainer cost and recovered those third-party vendors. And so this structure is in an effort to save that potential.
Okay, so I guess what I'm not understanding yet is just how is this agreement different in structure from the previous one? What changed?
The difference is that I'm proposing to add the $50,000 of, in case we need it, in case we end up in a transaction that we're going to eventually present to the City Council. So the way normally it would work is I would present at closed session, ask for permission to negotiate, receive direction of X, I go and I procure an appraisal that costs $3,000, and inspection in Phase One, and et cetera. So those couple thousand dollars for appraisals and Phase Ones and et cetera is what I need the $50,000 for before I come to council for the transaction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other councilmember have questions on this item? Councilmember Peralo?
I would just like to share with Councilmember Starr, when Mr. Ramirez has brought something to the council, it's much better if things can come and it's more complete versus having to piecemeal it. And I think he did a, I'm satisfied with his explanation, but the, having to come back and then come back and forth, and there's a time opportunity lost if that happens. But I appreciate your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Before council discussion, we will receive public comment. Speakers have three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this time, did you want to entertain a motion?
Yes. Well, just what is the pleasure of council on this item?
So I would move this staff's recommendation.
I would second that recommendation.
Any further comment by any councilmember? Madam Clerk, can we take a vote?
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item K two. It's from the Public Works Department. The subject is Public Project Agreement with Yala Engineering, Inc. for Eastern Trunk Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation, Phase One. The recommendation from staff is that the City Council approve and authorize, one, which is a total of $3,427,200 in project funds for the Eastern Trunk Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation, Phase One, it's rebid two. Also, that the mayor is asked, they're asking the mayor to execute in agreement with Yala Engineering for $2,856,000 and a project contingency amount of $285,600, or 600, for a total not to exceed a value of $3,141,600 for the project. And number three, a project allocation amount of $285,600 for engineering, inspection, survey, project management for the project. Do any councilmembers have any question from staff on this item? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmember. I see we have Mr. Wolf and Mr. Beeman. I'm just wondering if, for the benefit of the public, if we can get some information here, just for the record, looking at the staff report and the presentation, can we just summarize a little bit about our sewer trunk lines? What that terminology indicates, what that is, as well as some of the requirements of this bid that went out, or request for bids, and what we were asking of bidders to do through this agreement?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Tim Beeman. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. I oversee water and wastewater. And so for our collection system within the wastewater system, we have three main trunk lines. Now, those trunk lines actually collect a big chunk of each throughout the city. We have the Redwood trunk, which is furthest west. We have Central trunk, which goes through the center of town, and then Eastern trunk, which is on the east side. So a couple years ago, we actually did a very similar project for Central trunk. And prior to doing the project, we actually go through and do a survey of each manhole within that trunk line. So generally, what triggers a project like this is through our routine maintenance and inspection that our collections team does, they start to make note on all their documents. They say, you know, we're seeing a lot of corrosion on these manholes, and through those notes, that's how we develop these capital improvement projects.
Thank you. And as a quick follow-up, I believe from the report and the presentation, that through the nature of some of the environments that these trunk lines have within them, there is, that leads to corrosion within some of the manhole covers and their accompanying piping. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And so with Central trunk, it was more based on age, but for Eastern trunk, because of its location in town, it is more susceptible to, or susceptible, it collects more from our industrial users and commercial users. And so we do see much more of a spike during the day when flows come in. The more turbulent the flow, the more hydrogen sulfide is released through the wastewater collection, and that actually is what eats the concrete away and can damage the manhole lids as well. So you'll notice in this, there's two additional that are just the lids, but the other ones are actual structural rehab of the manholes. And just to note that this is Phase One, and so we do have, I believe it's six manholes that require full replacement, but due to the overall cost of that, we wanted to separate this out to fit within our existing budget, approved budget by you.
Thank you. And just one last clarification on what we were requesting of bidders to do as part of this agreement.
Certainly. And so we look at it from, we base it on three types of rehab. So one could just be the lid, one would be some structural repairs and coating, and then the other one would be a full coating. And so we do coat the inside, and that helps protect the concrete from any further corrosion.
Thank you. My question's, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Starr?
Thank you. So I won't talk about only one vendor having submitted a bid here. I think that's a broken record. But I do want to ask about what the expected life of this rehabilitation is for the Eastern trunk. I guess, first question is, when's the last time we had to do a rehabilitation for the Eastern trunk? And how many years from now will we need to repeat this?
So in terms of manhole rehabilitation of this nature, this is actually the first time since the Eastern trunk was constructed. The pipeline itself is plastic, is a plastic material, but the manholes are concrete. So this, we have some coatings that have been in the system for decades, and they're still in very good shape. So this sort of repair and rehab has a very long shelf life.
Okay, so maybe 10 years, 15, 20?
Over 20.
Okay. And I assume that there's quite a bit of damages that we prevent by fixing this, that the risks to our water tables and that sort of thing is that?
Certainly. And so a little over a year ago, we actually had corrosion on one manhole that with the addition of the two years of record rain, a lot of dirt and debris infiltrated into the manhole, and that caused a collapse. So by doing this preventative maintenance, that prevents these collapses from having. Now, unfortunately, it was at the intersection of Octorus and McWayne down on the southern end of town. Now that full collapse, because of the scale of what it was, the emergency repairs were upwards of $600,000.
Right. Okay. So I read through the contract thoroughly, and there was one significant issue that concerned me, and that had to do with the liquidated damages provision in the contract. So I'm looking at this $3 million contract, and if it's not completed on time, the liquidated damages that we are able to claw back from the vendor is only $250 a day. So my math is right, it's about $91,000 a year of damages that we could seize back from this vendor if he delays a year to do a $3 million contract. I would expect that the damage that we would suffer from such a delay would be much higher. And I'm wondering what went into the decision as far as how much that liquidated damage provision amount should be. I'd like to also know whether, is this something that we can still revisit? Is there a way we can increase that to something a little more reasonable? I'm just concerned that if I'm a vendor and I've got this big contract, and I know there's somebody else out there that I'm doing a contract for them that's more profitable, well, I want to do that contract, not Oxnard's. So, and when I look at this, I'm also comparing it to, like, for example, we had two playground projects, replacement projects on the consent calendar, and that has a $500 per day liquidated damages clause, whereas this only is $250. And the projects for the playground replacement are roughly 10% of the size of this. So the liquidated damages for not having playgrounds in on time is a much bigger percentage of the contract. And I suspect that the real damages that we could suffer are not very high for playground equipment not getting in quickly, but I can see really significant damages to us if this project isn't done on time. So can somebody kind of walk me through the liquidated damages piece and whether that can actually be changed?
So the second part of your question is, in order to change it, we'd have to rebid the project. So the project is bid with the specifications as stated. In order to change that, we'd have to go through the entire process again. So liquidated damages, and I'll have the city attorney talk about some of the court cases that are out there about reasonable cost and actual cost, right? And so liquidated damages is required by the Public Contracting Code. We do take an evaluation of each one of our projects, and the way this typically is done is we think through what would be reasonable cost to us? What would it cost us if there was an extra day? So in your scenario where there's an extra day where they're still working on the sewer line, we still have use of the sewer line, there's really actually very little actual cost associated with that delay day. So that's why the liquidated damages on these kinds of contracts aren't as high, because there's no out-of-pocket cost for us. We're still using this, they may have a bypass line in place, we're not, we're not, we're still using the services. There may be some inconvenience of the traffic control still being up, but there's no actual cost. So if we actually went to court and tried to redeem very high liquidated damages, we would, again, speculation, but if you look at court cases, we would typically not recoup those costs. So each one of our contracts, we take a look at what would be a reasonable cost associated with a delay of that one. So the example would be on the playgrounds. And so on the playgrounds, we may be required to have additional inspection from a certified playground inspector, so that would be a cost to us for those additional delays. And so you could see where we start building LDs based on a case-by-case basis for each one of the different types of services or projects. And so that's why they're not all the same. Some seem to be smaller compared to the size of the contract, but it's not necessarily, the dollar amount of a contract is not going to dictate to us what is our actual incurred cost if there's a delay. So you could see a smaller contract with a very high LDs if it was, we couldn't use the intersection of X and Y, right? That would cost us a lot of money to either staff it or have police officers out there to control traffic. But it could be a very small contract cost, where, one of these ones where it's underground pipelines that we're not going to lose the service of that, then the liquidated damages is a little lower. So that's kind of that analysis that we do.
Right. And I wasn't thinking about necessarily the service being available, I was thinking more in terms of, you know, the damage to, you know, our aquifer, for example, if we had some issue caused by a delay.
So, yeah, I'm not sure I relate delay just to causes of, aquifer causes. I think in that scenario, we have liability requirements, insurance requirements. So if they actually damage the aquifer because they're some sort of incompetence, it's not a delay issue, it would have to be an incompetence issue, not the fact that they took longer to do this. Because we would require them to meet certain requirements during the diversion, they would have to meet certain requirements. I don't see that correlation, but I understand the question is, if there is, maybe they, through poor means and method, or incompetence, or whatever, they damage something, we have different mechanisms in the agreement that allows us to go after them from a liability standpoint, a claim standpoint. So those are different clauses in the agreement.
Okay. And I do understand that the purpose of liquidated damages is not to be a penalty, but I wonder still, I don't know if there's a mechanism that's allowed under the law where we can incentivize a contractor to get something done on time, as opposed to it, because sometimes these projects do run a lot longer than they need to, it seems, and that service is delayed, and the public's ability to benefit from that is delayed. So I don't know what can be done about that.
So I would say, just based on many years of doing this, that when you put higher liquidated damages, that usually increases the bid cost. The contractor's going to cover their, you know what, in terms of being able to address this. And so we have to be very, very careful about putting in arbitrarily high liquidated damages, because what you're doing is you're not really getting any insurance for it, right? Because if we go to court for that, we're likely not going to actually retrieve that, but the contractor's going to see that and say, "I got to put more money into my bid." So there's that balance there that we have to understand, that we can't just put up this huge dollar amount, because what that really results in is higher bids.
Well, I hope that for the future, that there's some consideration as far as what mechanism can be in place to incentivize on-time performance as opposed to a lot of these delays.
Yeah, I apologize I missed that part of it. So there are mechanisms out there, there are different procurement methodologies, there's different contracts. I'm not aware of one here in Oxnard, but I have seen them in other places where you incentivize, you do the carrot rather than the stick component of that, right? And so there are, when you, actually, when the next item that's coming up, you'll see that there is some component of that where we evaluate, where we actually include in the evaluation process before we, as a weighted value to select a contractor, we include some of that stuff. So that's the carrot part of that as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Starr.
Thank you, Councilmember Starr. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pearlum?
Councilmember Starr, these are good questions. And it used to drive me absolutely crazy when only one party would bid on a job. And I would ask a question, and I found out, and I'm hoping that they can tell us what the timeline is and how much time is lost when we go back out for bids. But I do see your point with respect to the difference of the penalty for the sewer versus the penalty for the playground. But I will share with you, penalties in money and the penalties in politics. I can tell you from having neighborhoods that have had a playground that's not fixed on time, they will eat you alive, and it's not publicly, and it's not the fact of money. But I do appreciate you asking those questions. And possibly, we could incentivize something where if somebody gets the job done early, they get a bonus. That is another way that we have been, and there are gentlemen in the back of the room, some county jobs, that's how some county jobs are.
So we're a general law city, so we have to be, we have to follow the requirements. So a county may be a charter county, so they may have different procurement allowances, different ways of procuring. So we just have to make sure within our allowances in terms of how we procure.
Because I am well aware, another party's in the room, there is a construction job going on, building a house, and all of a sudden the workers don't show up, and they don't show up, and they don't show up, and days go by, and now they find out they're working somewhere else, as the example Mr. Starr gave. I'm well aware of that happening, and I want to make sure, as I'm sure every other council member here, nobody takes advantage of the city of Oxnard. That's just, I wanted to express that. But I appreciate this, and I appreciate your guys' answers. Thank you.
Any other questions from any member of council? Before council discussion, we will receive public comment. Just a reminder, speakers have three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
Mayor, we have no public speakers for this item.
Thank you. If there are no speakers, what is the pleasure of council on this item?
I will move the recommended action.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tharan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearlum?
Yes.
The motion to approve carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is item K3 from Public Works. The subject, Public Project Agreement with California Skate Parks for Design Build of the Skate Park at Del Sol Park. The recommendation is that the city council approve and authorize, number one, a total of $4,500,000 in project funds for the design-build of the skate park at Del Sol Park. Number two, that the mayor execute an agreement with California Skate Parks in the amount of $4,099,099 with California Skate Parks. Number three, a project allocation amount of $409,0091 for engineering, inspection, survey, and project management. And four, a budget appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from the available fund balance in the Development Impact Fee Fund to the skate park in Colonia Capital Improvement Project and corresponding capital outlay fund transfer in, and appropriation in the same amount. Any council members have questions of staff on this item? Councilmember Starr?
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate you bearing with me all these questions. I'm just trying to get up to speed and better understand the process here. So with this design-build project for this skate park, how do you come up with four and a half million, I mean, instead of, let's say it's four million or five million, how in the world does one actually come to that figure in a case like this?
So when we originally actually inherited this project, I inherited this project when I got here, I think it was two million or two and a half million. And then as we started to actually do some, the staff that's here now, we started to look at some examples of other cities. And so we have our project manager Taylor here, and our city engineer Morgan here. And so we started looking, I think Taylor, you looked at a couple of projects, city of Ventura and around, and we started seeing the scale and size of projects and the cost associated with those projects. And when we went back to council, I think early 2023, and asked for, or actually it was middle of 2023, we asked for additional funds just based on those estimates of other similar projects situated here locally, based on the understanding of what we knew the community would want in terms of the size and scope.
Okay, and I guess one thing that concerns me is sometimes these contractors love to find ways to, you know, increase the cost down the road through various scope changes or what have you. And I'm wondering, do we know if, whether for this particular contractor, for this particular vendor, California Skate Parks, what's been their history with other projects? Has there been any sort of creep in the price because of changes after that, or?
So the good news is that this is a design-build procurement process. And so those concerns are actually one of the reasons why we would typically go with this type of processes, because in a traditional design-bid-build, those kinds of scenarios would present itself. We would do the design separate from bidding it out, and the contractor would say, oh, your design's not right, or this doesn't look right. The benefit of this design-build process is such that they're the designer and the builder, so their argument is internal, not to us. And so my answer to your question is, we didn't do any research on that? Because we didn't need to do any research on that, because this is not the procurement method for that.
Okay, and I was curious, there was another bidder, and I love it when there's more than one. But I'd like to know, what was it about Spohn Ranch's proposal that you found to be less attractive than the one submitted by California Skate Parks?
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Taylor Gambino, I'm the project manager for this project. During the evaluation process, we had a written component, a graphic component, and a presentation. And we weighed all three of those things. So the special, the presentation portion, they were both great. They're both great teams, very knowledgeable people. But when it came to the graphic proposal, California Skate Parks just blew Spohn Ranch out of the water. So it was a significantly better proposal that they spent more time on and very much catered to the city of Oxnard.
Okay, and?
Councilmember Starr, if I could just add, if you don't mind, please? So the other thing that I would note is that it was a group, it wasn't just one person doing the evaluation. It was a group of folks comprised of staff members from Public Works, staff members from Culture and Community Services, and we actually had a professional skater participate in the evaluation process as well. So we wanted to get input of all the criteria from a well-rounded folks from different perspectives. So I just wanted to add that it was just not one person making that selection.
I really appreciate that. So I understand there were seven scoring criteria. And how is the weighting determined by each? And I'm just wondering how much subjectivity goes into it? I mean, I can really easily imagine if I were doing something like this, I could say to myself, well, I really like this particular vendor, and I'm going to make my subjective scores fit.
So the scores were all determined prior to, and were included in the RFP. So the vendors were aware of what the scoring criteria was prior to submitting their proposal. So they were well aware of those.
And I think part of your question is, the answer is that they actually, the code dictate, there's code, there's code for everything, right? So the Public Contracting Code actually outlines the criteria and talks about certain restrictions, like this can only be weighted so much, this has to be weighted this much. And so we follow mostly that. But then we also put, again, we have the ability in some places to put our own fingerprint on it. And so we look at what's more important to the communities? Is the timeline more important than the design? I'm making up an example here. So there's some flexibility, but some of it's dictated on code. And I know maybe Elle wants to add anything else to that, or?
Hi, yeah, it's Public Contract Code 21164, and they call out three specific criteria. You have to look at price, you have to look at their construction and technical expertise, and then you have to look at the lifecycle costs of the skate park over a 15-year period. Those are the three mandatory criteria. So if we wanted to award on all of that, we would have a weighted award based on like 33%, 33%, and so on, so that we get almost to 100. We added in a couple of different components, and then there was a weighted value. And each of the two proposers were scored equally based on all components of their presentation. So it's not arbitrary, it's whoever essentially collected the most amount of points, and whoever really was high on those three mandatory sections from Public Contract Code.
Okay, all right. And what is the expected life of a skate park?
Depends on how well it gets used, I guess. So this, mostly we made it on concrete, so quite a long lifespan. As Elle mentioned, part of the evaluation criteria is the long-term maintenance cost. And so when the team evaluated these different examples, they used that as a criteria to make sure that it can last as long as possible. Now, I'll say some components will last longer than others. You know, you can imagine that some of our skate park components can last up to, you know, 20, 30, 40 years, depending on the use. Some of them may have to get replaced a little bit faster depending on the use of them. So to put one number on it, I don't think we could. But again, it was actually part of the selection criteria to make sure we had the best long-term maintenance cost.
Okay, and once this project is completed, what would be the annual ongoing costs of maintaining this? I mean, I've seen in the past where we will build a park, and then that's exciting, that's new. And then sometimes the maintenance of it, you know, is deferred a lot longer than the public's happy with. What type of ongoing costs should we expect with this skate park once it's completed?
So I don't know if anybody is here from Culture and Community Services, they would be the one that would program it. Actually, we do have somebody here, so they may be able to talk about staffing. There's other components to it, there's, you know, maintenance costs. Again, these are, we build it the right way, there's not going to be, you know, daily maintenance, you know, graffiti abatement potentially, or actually mostly stickers, right? Removing stickers, right? That would be pretty standard. There's going to be a lighting associated with this, so there'll be some lights. Now, as you noticed, that there's a component of the design that actually is removing some of the existing landscaping. So there's actually going to be a cost savings, an annual cost savings maintenance for that.
I love it.
An annual cost savings for irrigations. There's an annual cost savings for some of the lights that are going to be removed. So we didn't actually do a detailed analysis, but a lot of that will be awash based on those savings and the new costs. But I think the staff is the one component I can't answer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of city council. I'm Julia Estrada, Culture and Community Services. I'm the recreation representative for this project. I have also managed our current skate park, Bedford Pinkert Park, for many years. Depending on what the final design, now obviously with every construction project, there's a design that has been proposed, programming that is planned. Part of this project, the commitment we made is to have an Olympic-style skate park, which is going to give us a competition facility. This is something that is not currently in existence, truly in the county of a true competition facility. So this is definitely putting us ahead of the game with a lot of our neighboring cities who have great skate parks. But this is a significantly larger plot of land that is allowing that. So in that, it will depend on what the overall programming requirements are going to be for this facility, whether it is monitored or not monitored, and also what the council's desire is on how often we want to bring these competitions to Oxnard, and then having those staffing support systems in there. So that will be part of the long-term evaluation of the ongoing costs for this facility. For the most part, skate parks kind of run themselves. It is a lot of graffiti abatement. What we have gotten commitment from the vendor is part of their concrete pore will have color put into it, which will help deter graffiti. So they have taken that into consideration. They have also, we've asked for, all of the bidders taken into consideration, use of the park. And so we've taken all of those things in mind to help lower those costs and the need for monitoring of the skate park, to help keep, you know, errant toys and soccer balls from rolling into the skate surface and creating a collision for the skaters and vice versa, if anybody takes a fall too close to the edge of board coming out and hitting pedestrians. So we have put all those things in place. That helps negate some of the monitoring costs and ongoing staffing costs. So once those designs are finished, that will help us determine what the staffing and programming portion is going to be. And that will come with the community outreach that will be part of this design process.
All right, well, thank you. I mean, to the extent that, go ahead.
One more thing I wanted to add is the, one of the other maintenance costs is, of course, going to be some of the landscaping throughout the park. We have called for native and drop-tolerant landscaping, which typically requires a lot less maintenance overall.
Well, definitely, what I really love seeing in these projects, at least for future reports, is just what's our commitment for the future on an ongoing basis? Because like I was saying before, it's always exciting to build something new, and not so exciting to maintain it. Or to run it.
Sorry, so I can say that the last time we did monitor a skate park, the ongoing budget for that skate park was approximately $30,000. And that was considerably a certain, you know, period of time ago. Costs had may have gone up. But that, just to give you a ballpark of historically what our skate park budget was, it did sit around $30,000 for staff, for monitoring, and janitorial needs and maintenance of the actual park.
So just, so spending, let's say, would shock you if it was $100,000 a year, or?
That would shock me.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, just a quick follow-up question to that. Is, do we really have the space to put an Olympic-size competition skate park?
Yes, so we have, and part of prepping this, worked with the federation that is in charge of certifying skate parks. While we're not seeking certification at this time, we are seeking the advice of that organization. I do have a history of working with the US OPC, and so we reached out to them, got the proper federation that certifies for skate sports. That organization is called World Skate. They are located out of Switzerland. We don't have a US skate federation here, so they do defer to the International Olympic Committee. We have sought their advice on the size of land. We have more than enough space to meet their requirements should we ever seek certification. In addition, this company that is before you today is the ones who have constructed both Japan, Paris, and other Olympic-grade skate parks throughout the world. They're also the ones who constructed the Bedford Pinkert Skate Park for us. They're very, very aware of what those requirements are and have provided information in their presentation on how, should we decide to host a large competition, how it would work on this facility with our space. And we do have ample space for such a facility.
Is it going to be lit as well?
Yes.
I gotta tell you, just from speaking with the folks in that neighborhood there, knowing this was on the agenda coming up, they're really excited to have something like that in their community, especially there with the built at Odell Sol High School, and especially in an area where we have a lot of vulnerable youth. This is a fantastic concept. Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, just to clarify, in case folks haven't had the opportunity to look at the video that was provided or the PowerPoints, can you please just tell the general public where it's going to be located?
Sure. So this is going to be located on the corner of Camino Del Sol and Rose Avenue, and part of the Del Sol Park proper. So the placement of it will not affect what is currently used as our soccer fields. And a neighboring housing project is also committed to do additional green space. So while we may be losing green space in the park as it stands, the community will still be gaining that back in another development.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada.
Thank you. I'm just glad a professional skater was part of that process and the design, right? So it's going to be fantastic, I'm hoping, that's great, thank you.
I have, just one last question. Could either of you just address what the additional parking requirements will be and brought about by this project, and how that will be addressed?
So we are going through the environmental process. Right now, we don't anticipate any additional parking. I can't remember if we're adding parking to this. We're not adding parking, so the anticipation is the existing park space, parking areas is sufficient for this. Again, we will have to go through a sequo process for that, so that may be one of the evaluations that we do.
So could we have a situation where we build this thing, and then later, will the sequel thing come before we build this?
No, so that's the, again, the beauty of the design-build process. So that's the, again, the beauty of the design build process, those are all folded into this timeline, and so they're not separate and apart from that.
I just, I'd be worried about a situation where we built it and then it was decided that, oh, we don't have the parking to manage that.
Well, part of this will be that we want people to walk there, too. So we really want this to be an opportunity for those neighbors to actually walk there, so.
Yeah, and I want everyone to take the bus, too.
Councilmember Starr is asking because he doesn't want to fight for parking when he goes out there and skates.
You should see me on a skateboard, it's not pretty.
We will take pictures.
Yes, or City Manager?
Yes, thank you. I want to add another important fact. This is actually a majorly fun project in terms of what it will deliver to the community. This skateboard park, similar to the earlier items on consent, is also going to be accessible. So I don't know if anyone's ever seen people who, and I apologize, I don't know the correct phrase, but I'm just going to say people who are wheelchair-bound will be able to participate with a helmet. We're going to encourage everyone to use a helmet and skate or wheelchair to the park. So there are competitions in major skate parks for people in wheelchairs.
That's great.
So it's pretty radical. I wouldn't even do it with a skateboard, let alone a wheelchair. So I'm very pleased that our staff are continuing to be open-minded and consider when we build these kinds of facilities to make sure that it's available to as many people as possible, similar to some of the park items earlier with the accessible playground amenities that we're adding every time we have a chance. If you look at some of those amenities, and I'm referring back to that, they never required any modern engineering design. They could have been built with a piece of wood and some rope. It just took a long time for society to care about it. So I'm very pleased that our staff are assuring with this major project that even people who utilize wheelchairs can compete and do amazing things, including flipping in the air with the wheelchair. So lots to look forward to. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Perlo.
Yes, I appreciate this, but I have one specific question about life. How long has the Bedford Pinkard Skate Park been in place?
We opened the Bedford Pinkard Skate Park in June of 2004. June of 2004. So it just hit 20 years a few months ago.
Okay, and having, not that I skate, but having attended that area, I often see when they talk about the cost of maintenance, the people break down the fence to get in there. And this leads to my other question, and I don't want to be the wet blanket on this issue. I used to attend motorcycle events, and there was a large firm called New Hall Land and Farming, and they had a facility called Indian Dunes on 126. You had to sign a waiver and you were liable. A kid broke his neck and the family cleaned out everything that that company had. The issue, when I go by on Rose Road, and it doesn't matter if it's Ojai or Santa Paula or any of the other communities that have skateboard parks, I don't see kids with the helmet, and if I do, often the straps are dangling. How do we protect our city? And I'm asking it very blunt. We are going to spend $4 million, one legal judgment, and we might have a person in here, Mr. Moore, the big city insurance excess policy. $4 million is a drop in the bucket for a judgment against the city of Oxnard. How do we protect ourselves? I'm not against this, but I'd like to have that answer before I vote on this.
So Councilmember Perlo, and I would like to point out that we do have another skate park in the city that's been around for over a decade, has a very deep approach.
And as I mentioned, I can see people even today without the helmet, without the thing tied on, and in the dark, or if there's a football game going, the park shut down and they're in there. And do we have any complaints or claims or...
I don't know if we have any complaints. We don't have any claims ever from our current park. Now, if they are engaging in some sort of activity that is dangerous, that is on them, they are responsible. We can't control whether or not they have helmets on, whether they're locked. We also have something called design immunity, so provided that we aren't creating like these crazy hazardous drop-ins and obstacles in our skate park, we would be immune from any sort of crazy accident. Now, can we prevent somebody from suing us and having to go through an entire tort process? No. But would we be adjudicated all the way to where we are liable and have a multimillion-dollar judgment? Probably not either. So there are lots of skate parks across the state, and they're typically protected under like design immunity. This park will be the same, signed off by engineers, it has approved plans, and then we will take appropriate safety precautions, signage, and of course, you know, everybody knows to wear a helmet. There's a part of it that's on them.
Members of staff, I'm being told that some of our listeners can't hear, so if you can just talk closer to the mic, please.
Sure. Is there anything else you guys want me to say? I just realized I was pretty far from the mic. Do you need me to repeat anything?
Yes. My concern is this. Liability, I got a four-year-old kid, and as the mayor said, you know, the kid's doing backflips. I think we got a lady in your office whose kid is very talented with that stuff. And gravity rules, no matter what, gravity rules. And sometimes she's an evil woman. And we could have something extremely bad for some family and they would look to the people that own the skateboard park. We feel confident we're protecting our city and the residents, they're going to foot this thing.
Yes, and like I said earlier, we can't prevent somebody from suing us, but they are assuming the risk by going there, whether doing backflips or just flat-ground skating. And it depends on what they're, what type of activity they are engaged at, at our specific location, too. So there's also something called contributory negligence. So what were they doing, what were we doing? But we do have a lot of protections for something like this, and it's the same for all of our other parks where we just have simple swings and slides. You can have lots of things go wrong. And we have a very good track record of, I think, having no claims since I've been here in my two and a half years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just really excited, and Julie, thank you, and staff, thank you for looking ahead and making this an Olympic-size where potentially we can have competition, drawing in visitors, and really showcasing what we have in this city, and again, giving an impulse to this city to just be that much more vibrant. So thank you for thinking that forward. Thank you very much. Is there any public speakers on this item?
Mayor, we have no public speakers for this item.
I'm sorry, we do have a hand up somewhere. I'm sorry, Tom, we almost forgot about you. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the speakers. So my name is Tom Garcia, owner of Tomas Cafe, and I've been listening, obviously, to this project here for Del Sol Park, a much-needed attraction, I would say. But to hear on caution, I would like to hear more on how the city or developers decided to put a skate park here at a cost of $4.5 million for this community. No doubt that the community needs it, they need more, you know, but I would like to know how many actual skaters do we have? What's the daily usage of the current skate parks? You mentioned that possibly have competitions. One note that comes to my mind is that we had a local competition here in Ventura for two years, and so they use that facility, the fairgrounds, the X Games, and they're moving on. So obviously, it was a great, you know, for the Ventura, our time was definitely national TV and this and that, and hopefully we received great revenue, but it only lasted two years and it moved on. But just, so $4.5 million, sounds like, you know, it is a lot of money. I'm a business owner and, you know, or any, as a resident, too, $4.5 million is a lot of money, plus the additional costs. I would like to hear other options. What else, other than skating, can we provide for the facility, for the park there? Can we enhance the soccer facility? Can we provide a museum? Can we provide an art project? It just sounds like a lot of money, but I'm not a skater, so it's not a passion for me. I'm not part of the culture, so, but I would love to have skaters or just people in general just to come by and give their opinion, or if not, other enthusiasts of sports. But appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, for your phone call. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers before we move to Mr. Wolf to provide some clarity?
No, we do not have any additional speakers for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Do you want to provide some feedback on, for Tom's question?
I would say a couple of things. So we are doing a few things at Del Sol Park. This is one of the things that we're doing at Del Sol Park. So we have a restroom project and we have a playground replacement project. That was the other two, right? Yep. So we're not just doing a skate park, we're doing, this project is a skate park project, but we have other park projects for the Del Sol Park. I can't speak to how the current skate park is, how many people use it, and I don't know if Julie has any, but she can probably give some estimates. I will say that this has already gone through a couple of rounds of capital project approvals by council, so this has been vetted through the council process a couple of times. So this is not the first time that this has come up. It's been through this body on many occasions in terms of the annual capital improvement project, and again, when we went forward with the funding. Now, the funding for this is ARPA, and there are some restrictions, you know, can't just use it for anything. And so I would say that it's been pretty heavily vetted through the elected officials about making this a priority for this community.
Thank you, Julie. Do you have any insight on the usage and the demand for a skate park?
So Bedford Pinkard Skate Park is not currently monitored, so we don't have daily statistics for it that are current. The last time we monitored it was back in 2017, and we did have a few hundred people that would go through it every day at that facility. It was a very popular facility. Every time I go by, it's always having lots of activity in it. The demand for skate facilities has increased with the inclusion of it as an Olympic sport. One of the things that in recreation we try to do is create pathways for our youth, for whatever they're interested in, one of those things being sports. We have all of the Olympic sports, we have avenues for them. We did not have an avenue for those in our street sports to have a way to progress in their skill set. We only had the one park. Now, luckily, Public Works has heard us on that, and they have incorporated smaller skate facilities in park developments that are coming up. What we saw with this opportunity is that pathway to get our skaters the opportunity to advance in their skill set, advance in something that they love to do. California State Parks has done health studies on the benefits of recreation facilities in parks and how it contributes to not only overall physical health, but mental health, social awareness, volunteerism, civic pride. These are one of those things that do contribute to it. Del Sol Park is a very large plot of land, but it doesn't have very many services as it stands. This is giving that community, which we have historically found, doesn't always have, their youth don't always have a way to get across town to Bedford Pinkard or to get to where we're putting these future parks. This is providing a great opportunity for that direct community. We've heard from that direct community that they are looking for places to skate, there's not a lot of opportunity for them. And we took that into consideration as well as implementing a pathway for those street sports. I do know that on National Skate Day, historically at Bedford Pinkard, we had to close the doors because we couldn't let any more people in because so many people show up for it. There's also been an increase in quad skates on top of skateboards. So having this facility, while it is being designed for skateboards, also be accessible for wheelchairs, quad skates, inline skates, and other modes of transportation to explore and develop their skill set is, I think, very valuable to our community. It is something unique for the area, and it will definitely provide an opportunity for youth to explore potential Olympic opportunities that were never there before with the addition of street sports into the Olympics worldwide.
Sounds good. Thank you, Julie. Thanks, Tom, for your question. Mayor Potem, do you have a question? Go ahead.
If we're done with the public speakers, I just have a comment on this. I want to thank the staff for bringing this forward and thank all the questions from my colleagues. Before we move to vote on this item, I just want to share that from a youth development perspective, when you diversify your portfolio and offerings you have for young people, you're going to have a much wider net cast in how young people are kept from falling through those cracks. And, you know, especially young people in historically vulnerable communities like Colonia, Rose Park. And when we have opportunities for them, the boxing gym is a great example, those who would have maybe never had the opportunity to try that out can try it out and see if it works for them. And if it's something they enjoy, it is what's referred to as a positive alternative activity to what could be negative or risk behavior. And so especially in challenged communities, challenged neighborhoods, the more types of opportunities we offer to young people, the more likely they are to find something that's going to click with them. If boxing wasn't for me, and look at me, I'm not a boxer, but if I had something like skateboarding that I had an opportunity to do within my community or a very short trip to get to, that may be the thing that clicks with me. If it's not that, then maybe it's soccer, then maybe it's STEM activities, maybe it's engineering, technology, whatever the case is, but I need those opportunities to be presented to me in some way, shape, or form to even have a chance to know if it works for me or not. And that has been the challenge of communities like Oxnard, historically, generationally, is that kids don't get those kinds of opportunities unless they have the ability to go to another city or another community where those are offered to them. And so I just appreciate this coming forward, I appreciate all the work that's been put into it up until this point and moving forward if this council votes to move past this point. So I just, again, want to thank everybody for that, and it may not look like it, but I was a skateboarder at one point, and it burns a lot of calories. I should probably think about getting back into that, so. Anyhow, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Perlo?
Just like to add one short thing.
Point of order, I'm sorry. What I'd love to do is get back to using Robert's rules. I think you're making great arguments in favor of this, and I appreciate it, but let's put a motion on the table first and then argue in favor and against and then come to a vote. And I could, I'd welcome having either one of you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll go to...
And normally, just, I'm sorry. Normally, what happens is that the maker of the motion does get first preference to make an argument if she wants to. So I would suggest that we offer that to her and then move to Perlo, who's next.
Councilmember Perez, you made the motion.
To support.
To support it?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
I also support it, but I just want to say, driving by Oxnard High School and Pacifica High School, when I see the students walking around with skateboards, there's got to be a lot more interest in the population than we realize. I also realize that I may be the one up here with gray hair, but there's a lot of seniors that watch these meetings and they wonder, what are you doing for us in the future? Just wanted to share that. I support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Starr?
Yeah, so I'd like to speak in favor of the motion as well. I think what helps me with this decision is knowing that we got like $4.4 million of ARPA money, which is being spent in, I guess it's one of those use or lose it sort of deals. And given that it would be shocking if it costs us $100,000 per year to run this, it just seems like it's a really good benefit we can offer to the community. So for those reasons, I will vote in favor of this.
I just want to make a comment myself for it. I think Del Sol Park is going to serve as an example and a model, much to like Councilman Perlo's point, with the track that's there, I readily see our older community members walking that track and with the soccer play that's happening there. And now with the addition of the skate park that's there, it's a great complement, and I think it's going to showcase the various activities that youth can get involved in. So I really thank all of you for thinking ahead and being very progressive in those ideas. Yes, Councilmember Masua?
Thank you. I, as being in District Five and having the skate park in my backyard, literally in my backyard, it has a lot of use, a lot to use, lights are on, people are happy. So this is, to me, a very welcome addition to the northern side of Oxnard. So, this is, to me, a very welcome addition to the northern side of Oxnard. So, I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I'm actually really excited about it. It's going to be amazing. I think it gives an opportunity for all our community to have another skate park, and I hope I still get to see everybody on the south end because, you know, that's how we get them in the south end with the skate park. And the fencing really hasn't been a problem. I mean, yeah, we have people that jump the fence because that's how passionate they are. They want to skate when the park is closed, but usually it is extremely packed, and it's just, I think it's a very welcome addition, and it's just really good to see the community out there and enjoying open spaces like the ones you're going to create. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you want to say any comments or anything, Councilmember?
No, I'm in favor of the motion. I could just keep adding, but we'll carry on with the meeting.
Okay, sounds like we have a motion and a second. Can we take the vote?
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Mayor McArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Betas?
Yes.
The motion to approve carries seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody. We're going to be moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is K4, the City Manager Department. The subject, accept the grant from the California State Department of Water Resources in the amount of $1 million for the Santa Clara River Levy III construction project. The recommendation is that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Oxnard to enter into agreement number, et cetera, with the State of California Department of Water Resources to receive funds for the Santa Clara River Levy construction project and authorizing the city manager and designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Number two, accept the grant from the California State Department of Water Resources in the amount of $1 million for the Santa Clara River Levy construction project. And three, authorize the city manager or designee to execute a grant agreement and submit a financial reports, grant claims, and approve the necessary budget appropriations for the use of the grant funds. Do any councilmembers have any questions for staff on this item? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Smith. I appreciate this item being brought forward just so that the public has all the information, just in case they didn't get to watch the required measure M video. Can we just share a little bit about this? I know we talked previously about the reaches and SCR3 and where we are with this when this came to committee. I'm hoping that we can just summarize a little bit about what's in front of us here just so the public has that context.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Adam Smith, City Manager's Office. Just to echo some comments I made to the Finance and Governments Committee a couple weeks ago, this grant is an example of regional cooperation from the city, the County of Ventura, who's the lead agency, private enterprise and the wagon wheel development coming together, working with our representatives in Sacramento, Assembly members Bennett and Irwin, Senator Monique LeMonge, to obtain this funding for this very critical infrastructure, construction project. So, that's kind of the story of this item tonight.
Thank you. And you just share, can you just share a little bit about where we are now and what this acceptance of this grant or this, excuse me, if this grant were to be awarded, what that means for the construction of SCR3 and what we're doing here?
Certainly. And I can also, I can add that, yes, we have Gerard Capoussac, who's the lead project manager from the County of Ventura, in attendance, who can probably answer that question a lot more knowledgeably than me. So, there he is, right here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Capoussac.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Gerard Capoussac. I'm the Strategic Resiliency Group Manager for the Ventura County Watershed Protection District. So, here we are 15 years after we started this project to tackle a significant flood protection issue for North Oxnard. Councilman Perlo, before he was a councilman, was a member of the Flood Zone Justice Association, a group of neighborhood residents who, when FEMA came after the Katrina map, Katrina hurricane remapping, brought the attention of the community. You've heard that phrase, no one ever let a mapping crisis go to waste. It certainly brought people's attentions about the importance of dealing with flooding and to do it together. So, this launched an effort, a multi-year effort by Watershed Protection District, given the number of homes and commercial and businesses that are protected behind this to-be certified levy when we complete this project is considerable. It has a very high benefit cost ratio, that is to say, the investment that we are making in flood protection will have multiple returns. FEMA will generally only grant a project that has at least a one BCR ratio, that is, benefits of one or more times the damages. This project had five, a very, very high ratio. It was the highest project rated in the watershed protection portfolio. For that reason, we worked together cooperatively with the city. The funding plan for this $28 million construction project is approximately 72% from the Watershed Protection District, effectively our property taxes that contribute to that, approximately 10% from the city, 2.8 million of which this is an element of two other funding sources, two and a half million from FEMA grant, two and a half million from the State Department of Water Resources grant. So, we had to cobble together those funding sources. Luckily, the bid came in under engineer's estimate, which is what's helped us. We have launched this project. The Board of Supervisors awarded it in October of 29th. Construction is expected to begin in January. It actually could be constructed in a given year, but because of the presence of sensitive and endangered species immediately near the area where we'll be installing the sheet pile to protect the area from scour of the river underneath the river, from undermining Ventura Road and so becoming a flood protection, a flood, a damage problem for the community, we have to do it over two construction seasons because we have to work our way around the endangered and threatened species in terms of either phasing construction or deferring it until we can do that. But we're very excited about this project. It is definitely an example of the project that Councilman Starr mentioned about regional cooperation and your staff. I want to appreciate the participation by the city to step up and help us fund this project. As far as I'm concerned, Watershed's constituents are the city's constituents because we're here to protect the people from floods and to do that together. And I also want to extend personal thanks and commendation to Adam Smith, my counterpart, in helping to negotiate these agreements and move it along. As you well know, we've had two back-to-back years of heavy rains, so a good portion of my time for the last 18 months, that sometimes up until 12:00 in the morning, is dealing with FEMA to ensure that we have damage restoration grants. So, we've had a little bit of fits and starts about getting this done, but we had to cobble together the funding. We've been successful. We thank you for your participation, and we look forward to groundbreaking and making sure that this system is certifiable to provide protection for everyone behind it from a 1% annual chance flood, and that's the goal of this project.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Capoussac, for that comprehensive explanation. I appreciate the level of detail, and I think that that's not only great to have on the public record, but also I join you in commending the regional cooperative effort that had to come together to bring us to where we are today. And thank you, Mr. Smith, as a project manager with the city for your role in this as well. And lastly, just thank you for being here this evening, but also for you and the Watershed Protection District's support in informing residents when we have the annual request for updates on the levy, but also when questions come in, when rains arrive as well. So, again, thank you for your work on this.
You're very welcome, and I hope you still have my briefing binder that I gave to you upon your ascension to the council, because, as you know, we now have to move to the SCR1 levy.
As it turns out, it's in my new office, and it's for all the councilmembers to take a look at, too. It's openly available. Thank you.
Mr. Capoussac, is groundbreaking really of the right term for building a levy? I'm just curious.
Ah, if you have a preferential term, I'm open to it. How about holding hands and ribbon cutting?
I think Councilmember Starr had a question.
Yeah, first of all, I really like that we're doing this, but what I'd like to know is, I'd like to be able to say all the benefits that the public is getting from this. I imagine there'll be quite a bit of reduction in, you know, home insurance costs for people that would normally be affected by a flood that won't have that risk anymore. Do we have any sense of how much money that might be that saves the public?
So, you've hit on the key benefit cost ratio rationale for the project. To the extent of providing the protection for anyone who has a federally backed mortgage, they would not be required to purchase that insurance. Some people may still wish to do so even after the project is done, but they would not be required. So, that's an immediate cost savings benefit, investing in infrastructure rather than insurance proceeds necessarily to FEMA. So, that's an immediate benefit along the line. The average flood protection NFIP policy today in this area would be something approaching $2,500 to $3,000 a year in premiums, and that is likely to skyrocket as climate change and other aspects are factored into FEMA's insurance model, which is basically underwater nationally. FEMA's NFIP policy collects only about $6 billion in premiums a year. You can look back over the last several years and the hurricanes, the disasters, 25, $35 billion in disaster assistance. So, Congress has to basically fund that difference along the line. So, that's really the major benefit. And most importantly, the protection to the community from the damages of flooding, which is both a combination of water damage, but even more dangerous, the hydraulic force of the water, because water is uncompressible. And we measure this in terms of cubic feet per second. A cubic foot is roughly the volume of a half a basketball. The flow rate when Santa Clara River floods in this vicinity is something on the order of 225,000 to 250,000 cubic feet per second of water coming down. So, you can imagine 125,000 or so basketballs full of hydraulic compression force scouring, banging, and if that is let loose, that is a very major disaster.
So, just a little more clarification. So, this would help me. Can you give me a sense of how many homes are, will be protected as a result of this and what each home's savings would be?
Roughly 6,000 homes, plus or minus, plus the businesses in the public infrastructure in the area. It's difficult to give you an estimate of the cost because not all of those homes are currently required. If you don't have a federally backed mortgage, if you have no mortgage whatsoever, you would not necessarily be required to pay for the insurance along the line, and it's still unclear the number of homes, so I'm not in the position to give you that number. But the annual premium, if you were required or bought today, is in roughly $2,500 to $3,000 a year range.
And these people could actually not have to pay that anymore as a result?
If, again, if they had federally backed mortgages and the project's completed, they would not be required. They would have to make a choice whether to continue, but not be required by the lender. Congress has given the lenders almost universal power to require it. So, once the project is done, they no longer have to do that, so.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions they'd like to ask of staff?
I have comments, but we have some public speakers.
We do. So, before we begin any discussion, we're going to take public comment. Just a reminder, three minutes to provide a comment. Madam Clerk, is this the only speakers we have? I have Mr. Nash and also, it sounds like there's an additional person, maybe anonymous, behind him.
That is correct. We have two virtual speakers.
Sounds good. Welcome, Mr. Nash. Thank you for joining us.
I'm Steve Nash. Please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, please.
Madam Clerk, maybe we go back to him after we take the second virtual speaker. Sounds like this one is an anonymous caller.
Okay, next caller is phone number ending in 7359. Please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, good evening. My name is Bolshnablon. I live in River Park. I'm also the chair of the River Park Neighborhood Council. I want to commend the council on the earlier vote to authorize the MOA to get involved with this project, and I want to encourage the members of the council to accept the grant and get started on, so the city and the various other entities can get started on the SCR3 related construction project. Based on my past experience, we've had a couple of discussions in our community, which is a little bit north of the area, the scope of the project, and folks have brought some definite concerns about what happens when that 100-year flood comes and any action that we can take to shore up the levees and south of the 101 freeway is definitely a step in the right direction. So, again, thank you very much. Please consider supporting this project so that we can get this underway and done and so we can start looking at the other work that needs to be done to shore up the rest of the shoreline along Santa Clara River for the city of Oxnard. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you so much for your phone call, sir. Now, we may have had some technical difficulties, Mr. Nash. Oh, Steve is back, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Nash.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yes, Mr. Nash, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes it's confusing to discern the difference between six and nine. So, good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm Steve Nash, and I serve on the board of the River Ridge Fairways HOA, and on behalf of the 105 homeowners in our association, we urge council to approve the recommended action. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to all. Good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nash, for calling in. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That concludes our speakers for this item.
Yes, Councilmember Starr?
I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I'd like to just get one little piece of clarification. I understand that the city is spending other monies besides this million, and I think I heard a figure like 2.8 billion. Can someone just confirm what it is?
The different funding sources we have?
At least from us.
Oh, from the city itself? We actually do not have any. So, there's a developer deposit that we received for the developer wagon wheel. That was about 1.3 million. We have a million from the state, and then we have another 500,000 from actually HUD, federal monies that are incoming for SCR3.
Okay, all right. Well, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
And I'd like to argue in favor of it when that opportunity is given.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'd like to make a comment if you don't want to make a comment. Make a comment?
I was going to make my motion, I was going to make an argument in favor, and then, but if you want to do it first, go ahead.
Second motion. Okay, I'd like to just add something. I got involved in this as a neighborhood chair of the South Bank neighborhood, and I met some tremendously interested people. Sierra Linda Neighborhood Council, River Ridge Neighborhood, Windsor North, the gentleman that just spoke, Steve Nash, and the county employee, Mr. Gerard Capoussac. We found out a year 2010 when FEMA showed up at the Oxnard High School and informed the city that this was happening, and the city thought that we had six months to fight, and FEMA informed the city this was the last night. We able to get some money together, got an attorney named Richard Tentler, still operates in Oxnard. Mr. Tentler, through his skill and training, was able to get ahold of KCET Public Television, and then was able to get ahold of Oakland, California, to find out that FEMA had made mistakes with their maps. This area went into a flood zone one 24-hour period, then came out of a flood zone 24-hour period. But the issue that struck me the most, this is a volunteer group, and we forced the hand of all involved, county and city, because to express for myself, my wife and I, who both grew up in this area, would have never bought a house where we bought it if we had known that the dirt bank was not a levy. It turned out it's called a gap. It's just piled up dirt. It melts like chocolate when the river gets big. They need the levy. Mr. Capoussac explained part of the problems. This levy has been improved tremendously from Victoria coming upstream up to where the river and Ventura Road deviate. The mating cycles of insects, birds, and plants have been a big crowbar in this process, but this is something that needs to be done. When we were told 6,000 homes were going into this flood zone, the people that had those homes were in shock, and the elected officials of the city were in shock. I gladly support this, and it cannot go without saying, SCR1, which covers River Park, River Park is at great risk. That is the next big thing that the city's got to take on. We can't let that happen. I know we have some new councilmembers here. members here. I recommend those council members get a picture of the approved maps called flood inundation area, what happens to River Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I knew you made the motion. Councilmember Starr?
I'd love to argue in favor of it. So I just look at this from a financial standpoint. I see 6,000 homes that are at risk. I see, you know, let's say even at 1,000 of them that have this type of insurance because of the mortgages that they have. Well, given the figures we've been told, that's $2.5 million a year of savings among those 6,000 homes. And this is precisely the type of project that you want your government to do, because it's not like the homeowners can get together and build their own levee. This is just one of those things where it's necessary, where it's going to protect the, you know, the public. And the return for the money that's being spent here, it just seems like, it just makes a lot of sense to me. So for those reasons, I would urge a vote in favor of it, and that's what I will be doing.
Are there any other comments before we take a vote? No? I think it's a great idea, personally, anything, just to echo what Mr. Porello said, and Councilmember Starr, anything that protects people is good policy. So thank you for that. Madam Clerk, can we take a vote?
Councilman Starr?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Porello?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
The motion to approve carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I know we're at 9:30, but I think we may be able to make it before 10 o'clock. We're moving to agenda item K5, Public Works, subject Second Amendment to Golf Management Agreement and Additional Budget Appropriations. The recommendation that the City Council approve and authorize, one, the mayor to execute a Second Amendment to the Golf Course Management Agreement with American Golf Corporation for a time extension only for an additional term of four months, ending on June 30, 2025. And, second, the recognition of additional golf course revenues in the amount of $353,550, and appropriate an amount not to exceed $662,890 for fiscal year 2024-25 expenses in the Golf Course Operating Fund. Do any councilmembers have any questions of staff on this item? Yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Wolf. And I see Mr. Howlett. Has Mr. Howlett leave? There he is. Thank you for the presentation. Just as a quick item, just because Measure M does require folks to view the video presentation ahead of time on their own time if they didn't have a chance to do so, can we just give a summary on this item and the Second Amendment for this agreement with the American Golf Course?
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works. A couple times this past, maybe six or eight months, we've brought a staff report to council talking about the contract and expiration of the contract that operates the golf course. We have a 27-hole golf course that is operated by a third-party vendor that we hire. And part of that is this agreement that we have with them. And it was going to set to expire. We wanted to explore opportunities, negotiate an amendment with them first before we potentially went out to bid, to try to come to a amicable extension of the agreement or new agreement. And so we brought that to council, suggested that we enter into negotiation with the vendor. And so we have, are very, very close to concluding that negotiation. We've actually have most of the key points already agreed upon from a staff, to staff level. And so this staff report is suggesting that we finish off this fiscal year with the current contract, because if some of the councilmembers recall, the previous item that we brought a couple of months ago talked about how we're changing some of the mechanisms that we want to use to incentivize or otherwise provide a better golf experience for the golfers. And so it's easier for us to close out this fiscal year with the current contract instead of trying to do some heavy calculus in terms of calculating different incentives. So that's part of the staff report. The other part of the staff report is, we've done this a couple of years in a row where we look back at our original budget estimates, and we are making some budget adjustments based on the actual year-to-date information that we have and projecting for the remainder of the fiscal year. So that's the other part of this staff report, is doing what has been a pretty standard process for us to make some adjustments mid-year for expenditures and evaluations. And we did put a little bit of a benchmarking of what has happened in the previous fiscal years in the staff reports. That's there as well.
Thank you. And my last question, if you could just touch out a little bit on what was referenced in the staff report and the presentation for additional revenues for this year versus what was projected, but then also a quick explanation of the expenditures, specifically expenditures on a cart bridge and unplanned capital replacement of some of the equipment there.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, again, Steve Howlett, Assistant Public Works Director. So to summarize the additional revenues for the year, we were just tracking higher than normal, so we're looking at an additional $353,000. So our original budget was basically $6.5 million for revenues, and we're now tracking conservatively that we're looking at probably finishing the year around $6.9 million. In terms of expenses, we're asking for another $390,000, an extra $390,000, well, 600, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the net deficit. So the original budget was basically $5.9 million, and so we're asking for another $663,000 from the golf fund balance for a total expense budget of $6.5 million. And the leading component, we had three major things come up in this past fiscal year that we did not account for. One of them was the landfill post-closure maintenance. We found that there was some settlement issues that, working with VRSD and the state, that we had to do some topography work and make sure the landfill is still sealed and not settling, which the results came back positive. In addition to that, the golf cart bridge for hole number 18 has failed. We were working on that project, but it failed quicker than we expected, so that was another expense. And then the big one was last November, SCE was doing some work out along the Whitewater Channel, or the Santa Clara River, rather, and something happened, and they did not isolate the golf course, and they ended up frying the golf course irrigation computer and all the satellite stations. So we basically had to replace the entire irrigation system, just the components and the irrigation, the irrigation components and the installation was half a million dollars. In our claim to SCE, we're also seeking not only the equipment and the labor, but also the loss of revenue and the extra maintenance for the turf. So these were all unforeseen expenses. However, because of the performance of the golf course, it has little to no impact overall. We're still projecting that the golf course will remain profitable through the year.
Thank you for that. And you answered my follow-up question, which was, do we have a pending claim with SCE for what may have potentially been damage caused by their work?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And my last thing is regarding the reference to the landfill, just for context for folks who may not be aware, the golf course itself was built on what was previously a landfill, correct?
Correct. And for that reason, there are obligations of the city to work with VRSD and the state to make sure that we monitor the water quality and the off-gassing of the property, and also make sure that the landfill remains capped and stabilized. And so that was part of the topography work that we had to do earlier this year, is just to confirm that it is still in good condition.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Howlett.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers have a question for staff? Councilmember Starr?
Yes, I don't know when the right time is to ask this. I realize that we're only asking for an extension of the existing agreement, but I think there's some aspects of the existing agreement that I'm not a real big fan of. And I don't know what exactly it is that you want to change in the agreement for the future. Maybe you're already going to be addressing some of my concerns. But at what point would it be appropriate for me to discuss those, because maybe this agenda item is not it? At what point could we have some impact on that before we get the final agreement saying, hey, we're done, approve this? I think that we might be able to add something to the mix here.
Mayor and councilmembers, to answer Councilmember Starr's question, as Director Wolf indicated, we are very close to completing this, and so we will be bringing this back to City Council for your consideration, in which you can ask those questions, and we can have a discussion about what staff's recommendations are and how we got there.
Councilmember Starr, are you contesting the item as is right now? Is that what you're indicating?
No, I'm not contesting it. I'm just simply saying that there are aspects of the agreement that I'm just not real crazy about. And I don't know when the appropriate forum is going to be to discuss this before we're so far down the road that, you know, I'm just imagining you're coming to a meeting saying, well, we've put all this work, we're pretty much done, and no one has the appetite to make any sort of modifications at that point. So if there's any way to avoid that situation where it's like, hey, we're at the last minute, we need to make a change, I don't want to put you through that. If at some point we could have a conversation about what it is about the agreement that I have questions about and what maybe could be done differently, I'd appreciate that opportunity. I just, right now, it just seems like we're going down a path where that opportunity won't be there.
So I will say, there's a couple ways of doing this. As Steve mentioned, we are really close to finalizing the staff component of the new draft agreement, which will go through the committee and council. So there's an opportunity for input at that standpoint. We will bring that, we are planning on bringing that in enough time so that we're not up against a timetable, assuming, let's assume that this extension gets approved, we're not going to be bringing the new agreement in a May or June timeframe. We can bring it in a March or April timeframe for that very purpose, if there is a determination from the committee or council that there are some things missing. So I would say to you that we can maybe address that issue with understanding the timeline that we're proposing to bring the new agreement forward, would not put us in a bind where if, again, the majority of the council says, we don't like this, you know, go back and change it. That's an opportunity through that process. I would also say, if you have an opportunity to look at our previous staff reports, we actually enumerate the things that we want to change. So prior staff reports on this same subject, we'll talk specifically about the items that we're proposing to change from the existing agreement to the proposed agreement, so that'll give you a flavor of that. And we're certainly open to any comments you have, either now or via email, where we can sit down and talk about issues that you see that could be addressed.
Do you have like a current, like, red line draft of the agreement, showing what it was and what you're changing it to, so that I can, you know, if, I don't know if the rest of the council wants to do this, but I would love to have the opportunity to just, you may already be addressing my concerns anyway, but if you're not, I'd love to give you some feedback.
Typically, we don't put in like a red line agreement, because it'll have maybe their attorney's notes or our internal notes that are protected by some sort of privilege or--
Can you strip those out?
You could always contact me after the meeting or during the week, and then we could discuss some of that. And then whatever we would discuss would still retain the privilege.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other questions of staff from any councilmember?
Yeah.
Yes.
I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate where this city has come. I remember prior to getting on this council, I was hearing about high tides and green grass, and then court cases. And I can tell you that since I've been on the council and the management, specifically the current one, and the people working on this current staff, would never have allowed the original contract to go through. Where they only audited incomes or expenses. They didn't audit both sides. It was a tremendous fiasco at that golf course. It is totally different now. Some people may go, it should be making a lot more money. They should go back and check what this golf course used to do, and the people that were operating it, and how it hurt the city of Oxnard. It is an entirely different animal now, and I'm proud to say I'm involved with getting it there, and it can be better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike, would you have a comment?
I just wanted to go back to what Councilmember Starr was saying, because I can appreciate the comment, and I would offer up to him or any of the councilmembers, if you want to set up some time, and we can certainly go over the existing agreement and talk about some of those issues. So certainly willing to set up some time to talk one-on-one, because that kind of input will be helpful for us, because we also don't want to go too far down the line and miss the mark. And so open to all councilmembers and the mayor, certainly willing to sit down and go over the existing agreement.
Thank you for that. Any other comments before we, and Madam Clerk, I don't know if we have any speakers on this item?
We have two public speakers for this item.
Okay. There are no other comments from councilmembers. We'll go to the first speaker. Ray, you're up first, Platel, and then followed by Doug. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, city staff, Mr. Howlett especially. I guess I don't understand these expenses, especially those associated with the golf operations. Is the city actually supplying nearly $6 million to AGC in 2024-25? I recall at the initial contract with AGC, the city was supplying AGC $314,000 plus every month, even without them requesting additional working funds, as per the contract. I know this is true, because I asked for the data. I wanted to see the reports asking for more money. Never got a response. So is this true? You're still giving them money? I know the golf course is a city asset and must be maintained, and they have expenses, of course. But I thought the golf course is now an enterprise. Enterprises sustain themselves. The wastewater treatment facility is an enterprise. I don't think you supply this entity any other funds other than in the CIP. I could be wrong. I've been wrong before, so let me know. So the treatment facility is self-sustaining, and it's based on the rat payers paying for it. So can you please explain these expenses if the golf course is an enterprise? Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Our next speaker is Doug. Hi, Doug.
Good evening again, Mayor and council and staff and the public. I do still have concerns about this contract, because I've looked at it for about the last three years. And that's my concern, is, you know, I'm glad to see that they're showing kind of a positive ledger right now. That's great. And I was explained the apportionment, which I didn't fully understand before. Before, I thought, well, that's money coming out of the general fund, so they're subsidizing the golf course. But, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, and please give me some clarification, that this money is actually just increasing the ceiling on the budget. So it's not actually money that's coming out of the general fund, per se, but it's, you know, just increasing that ceiling so you can operate, you know, with that budget. You know, it's had increased revenue, it's had increased expenses, some things that were unforeseen. But my question is, is are we subsidizing the golf course? You know, are we paying that $300,000 a month to subsidize the golf course? I understood that initially, there was a need for the city to put in some money in the cash register, because you've got to pay bills, and you've got to have that money readily available in a cash flow. Well, they've been showing, or at least claiming, that there's a positive cash flow and there's reserves. So once you have those reserves built up to a certain point, do you still need to be stoking the cash register, so to speak? And is that still going on, kind of what Ray's question was? And so it's a concern, because it seems like the golf course has been treated much differently than other enterprise funds, you know, and the museum and the pact. You know, I don't think the pact got any kind of deal like the golf course gets. You know, I don't think they were offered, you know, the same kind of cash flow and money to keep their operation going, and that for our community. So those are some of the concerns and some of the questions, and hopefully I can get a little clarification on that, because hopefully there's going to be some equity and some parity in how we're handling these different. And is the golf course actually an enterprise fund? It's been called a business fund. I mean, there's a lot of different terminology that's been thrown around. So, you know, my understanding is that enterprise fund, no money comes out of the general fund. It's self-sustaining. So thank you for your time, and please, thank you for your clarifications.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Doug. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers on this item?
Mayor, we do not have any additional speakers for this item.
Mr. Wolf, are you able to make a comment to respond to Doug's inquiry?
Sure. The staff report's actually pretty clear. The fiscal impact section calls it the golf enterprise fund. So it's pretty clear it's an enterprise fund based on the staff report. It's treated exactly like all of our other enterprise funds. And so, again, if you review the actual fiscal impact section, it talks about appropriating that money from the golf enterprise fund, not from the general fund. I don't believe there's any use of the term general fund anywhere in the staff report. So to the question about subsidy, there's no subsidies from the general fund to the golf enterprise fund. You can see that in the fiscal impact section for the last two fiscal years, the difference between the expenditures and revenues are pretty clear. And so I know this has been asked and answered multiple times. I think some of the confusion is, when you look at the original start of the contract, there had to be some level of cash flow put into this operation. So that happened at the very, very beginning of this contract. It doesn't happen constantly. It's not putting general fund money in as a cash flow. Once the operation was up and running with that initial cash flow, then it's being operated as an enterprise fund. And so, yeah, I'm not sure we can make it any clearer than what the staff report says.
Appreciate it, Mr. Wolf. Thank you, council member.
I might be able to help actually a little bit. So when I'm reading the agreement, what it appears is that we've got really two different bank accounts here. We got one bank account, which is for all the expenditures that the management company is spending from. But they don't get to put any of the revenues into that account. The revenues, for control purposes, are going into the city of Oxnard's treasury directly, into an account that it controls. So you have a situation where the management company has zero revenue that it controls. It has to actually ask for the money from the city to, in effect, reimburse them for these expenses. Now, I have some issues with how that's handled. I have some issues with how money is allowed to be spent, but I can see how a system like that could seem rather opaque to somebody who doesn't understand the structure. And that's what's causing some confusion from some members of the public. So I think it's just a matter of better explaining it and hopefully, because I think it's a good control mechanism, having all the revenues go into the city's treasury rather than into something that is controlled by the management company. But this is why people are perplexed as to, well, why are you putting all this money in month after month after month? And the reason is because there's no revenues controlled by the management company itself.
And to that point, actually, some of our language in the new agreement clarifies a lot of that information. I think that's important to understand, that it's an accounting mechanism that allows for us to control that as much as possible, but it may not have been, it doesn't work like your normal bank account, I guess, is the point.
Right. And I think, and maybe I'm outside the scope of this, but when we talk about the contract and how it should be changed, I think in an ideal world, I'd have it so that you have enough working capital, so that it's a fixed amount, whatever you think is necessary to cover two months. And then each month, there'd be a request from the management company that says, this is what we actually spent last month, pay us exactly that amount to get us back to replenishment to where we were. And then, of course, there may be some dispute as to whether some of those expenses were legitimate or not and shouldn't be reimbursed, or the amount replenished, or the management company should replenish it. But these are sort of the areas where I'm going down in my head when I'm looking at the contract. I don't want to go any further because I think I'm just way out of scope for this item, but that's my thinking.
I will say that you may have been reading our draft agreement, because exactly that point, we're making the point in the new agreement. So yes, thank you for making that point, because I think it's, those are the kinds of things we need to discuss and have clearer in our new agreement.
Because it's really unclear to the public. They look at this and they go, you're getting a subsidy every single month. And it just, if you really analyze it and draw things out, it's not exactly happening that way.
Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have a comment?
No.
No. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. I just, looking at the time, Mayor, if, or my colleagues, if anyone has any additional questions or comments, well, I would recommend that we look at taking a vote to go past 10, but I see head shaking, so we can challenge ourselves to wrap this up in the next six minutes or so.
So move, just in case we need to.
Second.
Can we take a vote, Madam Clerk?
I think just to argue in favor. So I think that it's sensible for us to give staff an extension to the end of the fiscal year. It's going to help in many ways as far as negotiating.
I'm sorry, the motion on the table is for us to set a time.
It's 10 o'clock. Sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Can we take, Madam Clerk, can we just take a vote on just going past 10 o'clock, which I think is pretty reasonable?
Mayor Protam Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basula?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perallo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Starr?
Aye.
The motion carries to extend.
Ray, thank you, is there?
So at this point, I guess we should make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation. I'd like to make that motion, and then after it's seconded, I'd like to speak in favor.
I would like to second that motion, please.
Thank you. Do you want to make some comments making the motion?
Thank you. I just think this is very reasonable. I mean, they're going through a process. We don't want to rush them. I think having it go towards the end of the fiscal year makes a lot of sense. And, yeah, that's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any deliberation on this item?
Any arguments against the motion?
No? Okay. If there are no further comments, I'll call for the vote.
And Mayor, we have one last speaker, Pat Brown.
I see it here. I apologize, Ms. Pat Brown. Forgive me for that. Go ahead.
I moved out here from Woodland Hills in the fall of 1993, and I've been attending most of the city council meetings and involved in listening to what people have to say, the goods, the bads, and the uglies and so forth. What I see happening here, and it seems to be the same with the golf situation as it is with the sports, other sports situations we were speaking of earlier this evening, we put it off, we put off, we put off, and we hold money aside, and we wait, and we wait, and we wait. And if we wait too long, we end up with flooding when we don't need it, when we don't want it. We end up with sports activities that go down the drain because we didn't take up our opportunity, which would have brought more money in if we were actually activating, actively involved in these sports situations. We've got a huge event going to be coming up here in Southern California for sports. And if we have all of our golf courses all ready to go, instead of having flooding in one or two of them, like has happened in the past because of rains and we weren't prepared because we wanted to save the money, that we could have actually, if we had spent that, we would have made more money on the results of doing it. So sometimes you have to look at all the different options, not just what is the ones on top, but what will happen to make the good come out of the bad. You have to stop and go back through what happened, how it happened, why did we stop? Because we thought we were going to run out of money, but we weren't thinking about the money coming in afterwards, after we had fixed it all. So we don't fix it. And then we wait for years. For years, some of this has been going on, when we could have been saving some money here and there, a little bit here and there, and ended up with some profit on the end. Sometimes you have to just stop and think about this in a more grandiose way than what you originally thought. And you end up with some pride in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other further comment from members of council? Did you have anything, Mr. Wolf?
I just realized that I think earlier on I said 27 holes. I should have said 36. That was my only correction, so.
Oh.
So now, I don't think it changes anything?
It changes everything.
All right. My fault.
You're going to start the item.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just request, if we had the draft agreement, if there's an updated one, can you just share with council members, or just to make sure we have the most accurate information? You had mentioned earlier that maybe he was reading a draft?
No, no, no. I was teasing, because what he was saying was exactly what's in our draft.
Okay, great. Oh, what, you're considering changes. Okay, got it.
But I think we do need to question his handicap.
I like baseline nine holes, I guess.
Madam Clerk, can we take the vote?
Councilwoman Basula?
Aye.
Mayor MacArthur?
Aye.
Councilmember Perallo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilman Starr?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Teran?
Yes.
The motion to approve carries 7 to 0.
Thank you. And it seems like there is no further business on the agenda. And with that objection, we are adjourned to Tuesday, January 7. And happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.[1776.21]